Good morning and welcome to the Landmarks Preservation Commission's Public Meeting and Public Hearing for December 9th, 2025. We're going to begin by taking attendance, and I'm going to ask our legal counsel, Mark Silbermann, to call the roll.
Vice Chair Master?
Here.
Commissioner Chen? Commissioner Chu? Mr. Ginsburg?
Here.
Goldblum? Commissioner Ikumbe?
Here.
Mr. Jefferson?
Here.
Commissioner Mann?
Here.
Commissioner Wilder?
This meeting is being held in our hearing room at 253 Broadway on the second floor. It is also being held via Zoom and livestreamed on YouTube for anyone who would like to participate remotely. We're going to begin with a public hearing agenda for new applications on our designated properties. With that, I'll turn it over to our Director of Preservation, Corey Harala.
Thank you, Vice Chair Master. We'll start today's Preservation Department Public Hearing Agenda with item number one, LPC 26-01578. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 2104, Lot 55, 330 Claremont Avenue in the Fort Greene Historic District. This is one of a pair of French Second Empire-style houses built circa 1865 and later altered. The application is to construct a rear yard addition.
Hi, my name is Wen. I'm an architect for the project. I'm here to present to you this additions. I hope I can get your approval. This home is within the Fort Greene Historic District in Clement Avenue, and the cross street is Lafayette. Here are two historic maps showing its locations, and the Zooming version is showing its footprint. And here's a map showing the location of the home in the Fort Greene District, and the right-hand side is the site plan of the home. Can I go back? Okay, here we go. This is a three-story building constructed in 1965. These are the existing front and rear facade. There won't be any work in the front facade. Renovations and additional work will be in the rear yard, or restucco work on the side facade. And the image here showing the rear facade of the existing building for context. This is our building right here, 330 Clement Avenue. The next slide here, this is a section diagram showing the addition. It's not visible from a Delphi. It's blocked by the property on Lafayette 177 Lafayette Avenue. Here's a block plan showing the proposed building footprint in the context of the neighboring additions. And as you can see here, this is our additions. We're basically adding a second story on top of the existing one-story addition. Here are the demo plans and existing floor plan. The scope is to demo the existing rear extensions, and we build it. We built the first floor and add a second floor on the existing first floor. So the newly second-floor addition will be set back 30 feet from the property line. And this is the proposed floor plan, three-story with a cellar. The cellar is open, accessory use only. The first-floor additions is the kitchens, and the second-floor addition will be a bedroom, be the on-street bathroom, and a terrace. And the third floor is the primary bedroom, and the roof has two new skylights. On your left is the existing elevation. On the right is the proposed elevations. We convert the middle window to be a door, so then we can have access to the terrace, and we lift up this window to align with the right-hand side window. And the rear addition is constructed with a three-part stucco to match the surrounding. So what you see here, you see in the following images, you will see it says "ethis." We kind of revised that per comment from discussion with Dana, that we revised it to three-part stucco. Here's the existing site elevations, and here's the proposed site elevation. The red dash line is existing site elevation as an overlay to show the extent that we are adding. This is the existing sections. This is the proposed sections. This is a section showing the spaces of the additions. This is the rendering of the proposal. Two terraces and setback from the property line on the second floor, and the third floor remained consistent with the neighboring building. The following are some details of showing windows and doors, which include encasement, picture-framed, and double-hung windows in the rear facade. And on the rear yard design, the client decided to be simple, just a couple of pavers, stone pavers, and some landscaping, and we did a wood fence around it. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Commissioner Ginsburg?
Can the condenser be that close to the property line? It's great that you're putting it in the rear yard, but I thought it needed to be 10 feet from property lines.
I think it could be... Last time I got this comment was, I believe, 3 feet away from the property line, but I think if you put a non-combustible enclosure to it...
Thank you.
The DOB should be okay.
Any other questions? Noting that there's nobody in this room to testify on this applicant, I'm going to turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote testimony.
Those joining via Zoom who wish for testimony, please use the raise hand function, after which you'll be promoted to panelists. We ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Seeing none, one moment, I'm just pulling up the community board resolution. Brooklyn Community Board 2 recommends approval on the condition that there is reduction of the second-floor bulk in depth and height, and removal of the lot-line casement windows from the extension.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to respond to the comment?
Can you repeat that comment again?
Yes. Brooklyn Community Board 2 recommends approval on two conditions: that there is a reduction of the second-floor bulk in depth and height, and a removal of the lot-line casement windows from the extension.
Yeah, so we have reduced, we have set back the second floor 30 feet away from the property line, and then also we lowered down the depth, the height, a little bit to satisfy.
And if I could just note, the comment about the lot-line windows on the extension is incorrect. Those windows are on the main body of the house, and they're being reviewed at staff level pursuant to the rules.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay. So let's go ahead and close the hearing. Commissioner Chu, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'm moved.
Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. Commissioner Ikumbe, would you like to start this discussion?
To begin, I guess I'd like to say that it's pretty straightforward, and we've seen a lot of these. As it comes to the rear yard addition, I think it's appropriate. It's actually maintaining the line that the existing wanted, and I don't find that the second floor to be intrusive at all. I think it's at a modest scale. The third floor was retained, pretty much as much as it could be. One opening was altered, and another one has to be moved, so it's not in conflict with the terrace floor, which I think is an appropriate move to do in this case. Finding all that, overall, I can find this appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
I agree, appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Mann?
Agreed.
Commissioner Goldblum? Oh, Commissioner Goldblum.
I was saying...
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson? And Commissioner Chu?
Appropriate.
Okay. Thank you. So, Mark, would you call the vote? Or do we have to...
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's go ahead and read the motion. Thank you.
In the matter of LPC 2601578, 330 Claremont Avenue, Fort Greene Historic District, one of a pair of French Second Empire-style houses built 1865, this application is to construct a rear yard addition. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Fort Greene Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed rear yard addition will not be visible from any public thoroughfare, that additions of the height and projection exist on other buildings on this block, and the proposed rear yard addition will project into the rear yard no deeper than the existing rear extension being replaced, or that the adjacent rear extension therefore, therefore the work will not overwhelm the building or diminish the central green space, that the addition will not rise to full height of the rear facade, thereby maintaining a sense of the building's original massing, that the design of the two-story stepped addition, featuring traditional stucco cladding with punch multi-light windows and door assemblies, will be in keeping with the massing and articulated fenestration found at secondary facades and additions throughout this historic district, that the adjacent window openings at the top floor of the rear facade will maintain the vertical rhythm of the fenestration pattern at this floor and the neighboring houses, and that the work will not detract from the special architecture and historic character of the Fort Greene Historic District.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay. Now, Mark, will you call the vote?
Vice Chair Master?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Commissioner Ikumbe?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you. That's approved. Let's move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number two, LPC 26-03892. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 718, Lot 1, 440 West 21st Street, aka 402 to 444 West 21st Street, and 180 10th Avenue, aka 444 to 450 West 21st Street, in the Chelsea Historic District. This is an ensemble of English collegiate Gothic-style buildings around a close designed primarily by Charles Coolidge Haight and built largely between 1881 to 1902. And the application is to create a main entrance by replacing the West 21st Street gate and modifying the alleyway, installing signage throughout the complex, altering the close by installing paving, barrier-free access lift and ramps, and light fixtures.
Good morning. My name is James Kellerhaus. Excuse me. I'm the Assistant Vice Chancellor for Strategic Initiatives at Vanderbilt University, and I'm the Executive Director of Operations and Engagement for Vanderbilt, New York City, and I actually live on the campus. I want to thank the commissioners for the opportunity to be here today. Vanderbilt really deeply respects the work of Landmarks Preservation Commission and the critical role you play in safeguarding the architecture, the culture, and the historic assets of the city. It's an honor to present our plans for a campus that holds not only local significance but national and international heritage value. Vanderbilt is now the steward of one of the most extraordinary collegiate Gothic campuses in the city. We recognize that we are inheriting not just buildings, but a sacred trust, nearly 200 years of architectural achievement, education, and community memory. Our approach begins with humility. We see ourselves as caretakers of this historic environment that must be protected, respected, strengthened for future generations, and this is evidenced by the partners that we've chosen with us on this project at Bayer Blinder Bell, who are experts in historic preservation and have been with the property for some time. This campus has been a place of learning, service, and spiritual life since the 1820s, and it's evolved across several generations. Vanderbilt's presence is the next chapter in that long continuum, but not really a departure from it. In fact, our founder's son, Cornelius Vanderbilt, and his grandson served on the board of the seminary, so this is a very personal stewardship project for us. We aim to honor the campus's legacy while ensuring its buildings, courtyards, and spaces remain active, accessible, safe, and vibrant for decades to come. Our team has approached this work with rigorous attention to the historic fabric and the architectural integrity, and we're investing in the sensitive restorations, infrastructure modernization, and long-term capital stewardship. Every proposed intervention reflects our commitment to preservation first and ensuring that upgrades, whether structural, mechanical, or programmatic, stabilize, protect, and enhance this historic asset. Vanderbilt's goal in New York is to build a world-class academic hub that connects students, faculty, with the opportunities, communities, and industries that define the city, and we see this campus as an important anchor point for that. Our presence here is long-term. We've signed a 99-year lease with a 99-year renewal. We intend to be exceptional partners to this neighborhood, to the borough, and to the city as a whole. And from day one, since I joined in April of 2025, we've worked very closely with our Community Board four partners, the block associations, local institutions, and all of our elected officials to ensure our plans reflect that shared priority. We aspire to continue to be good stewards of the buildings, but also good neighbors, in adding value to the broader shared environment and strengthening the social, cultural, and economic fabric of Chelsea. Thank you so much.
Good morning. I'm Nate Rogers, partner at Bayer Blinder Bell, and we are the architects for this project. We'll dive right in. We know you have a busy day, so thank you for your time this morning. There is a lot of history on this site, which, in the interest of time, we're not going to get into. I think the owner has captured it well. Kind of take you through the parts of this presentation. Just first, on the site context and program vision, we're talking about 12 buildings stretching along 21st Street and turning the corner onto 10th Avenue. All, this is the site plan. All the buildings shown in gray are the spaces and buildings that Vanderbilt is taking ownership of. And again, we're talking about 12 buildings, 10 designed by Charles Coolidge Haight, which spanned 20 years, 1883 to 1903. And of course, Haight's extraordinary work on this campus is the primary driver of this site's historical and architectural significance. There are two later buildings that are in the mix here, Seaberry Hall, 1932, and Moore Hall from 1956, on either side of that black triangle, which is the main entry to the site. Of course, we're right in the center of the Chelsea Historic District, which was designated in 1970, and we'll note this relevant concluding statement in the district's 1970 designation that the LPC recognizes that the needs of this site, as an institutional property of higher education, will evolve and change over time, and so we feel like we're continuing the story today. Of course, use is a topic for maybe venues outside this room, but we're just mentioning that the historic and existing uses of the buildings under the seminary are being maintained by Vanderbilt. So we'll dive into the design presentation. We are talking today about a redesign of the mid-block entry, accessibility to four buildings, plus one landscape feature, site lighting, and signage. This is the existing conditions of the landscape on the site. You'll notice the entire west half of the campus, at some time, all of the hardscape pathways were replaced with concrete. They'd originally been bluestone. In the proposed condition, we're going to dive into each of these elements in more detail, but overall, we're removing all of that concrete and returning it back to its historical condition of bluestone. So, a couple more photos of the existing condition. The top row shows you some of the poor conditions of the bluestone itself where it exists, frost heaving and cracks and damage. There's also less historically sympathetic materials on site. You can see the concrete there at top right or top left, walls that are stucco with stairs that are diamond plate metal. But the bottom row are some of the more recent interventions, which we think are very good precedents and clues. You can see the use of the brownstone for walking surfaces, ashlar walls made of brownstone with brownstone copings, and painted metal handrails and guardrails. Also note, on the lower left-hand corner, the use of a radius geometry for stoops, which we'll come back to in some of the proposals. So diving into the 21st Street entry first. This is an area that's changed over time quite a bit. This used to be very much a kind of alley for trash and recycling, up until the point that the seminary sold their 9th Avenue property to a developer to build the condo building that's on 9th Avenue, and so this area had to become the main entrance to the site. It was not historically the main entrance to the site. The bottom right-hand photo is the existing condition today. And just a bit more information on that, as you come into that entry court, you see the concrete, metal stairs, stucco walls. There had been a wheelchair lift, a kind of telephone booth wheelchair lift, inside that stucco wall configuration over there, but that was removed some years ago. And so this is the, comparing the existing and the proposed condition, existing on the left. So for starters, you can see that the concrete is replaced with bluestone. The existing stairs, which are not historic, are being removed, and we're pushing them over to the west side of the entry so that we have greater space for the stairs, and we're able to tuck that wheelchair lift, the proposed new wheelchair lift, down on the right-hand side. They're over to the east. As well, there's a gate, a new gate, where the entry court meets the sidewalk up at the top of the screen, and at the bottom of the image is a new, kind of small intimate plaza that acknowledges where these east-west and north-south axes converge. We weren't able to find a historic photo of the original gate on 9th Avenue, but we did look at other very good New York City precedents, including at Barnard and Pratt, and also Charles Coolidge Haight's work at Columbia, at Yale, bottom right-hand corner, which incidentally is called Vanderbilt Hall, same family, and also some more recent inspirations at Yale, top right. That's a gate by Kent Blumer that we thought was a good precedent. We want to acknowledge that this gate is going between a 1930s building and a 1950s building, so to create something overly historic-looking would have been an anachronism. We want to respect this as of its time and appropriate, and so we think a design that's somewhat more transitional in nature is something that makes sense. Here's some more details on the gate, which will be painted steel. There'll be three-inch lettering above the gate with that fixed bar, which contains things like automatic door openers and motion sensors, you know, all integrated and tucked away. And then the two kind of piers of the gate will have lights within them that will be detailed with channel glass, which you can see in the kind of middle right-hand photo. And then as we move into the site, this is an elevation looking south. You can see the stair on the right-hand side and the lift, which we've designed to be really as integrated and as minimal as possible. And then a site section here, cutting north-south, looking east, so you can see how the stair leads you to that small plaza, which has a semicircular bench, shown here in the rendering. And so that's the 21st Street entry. Just to the west here is an existing hardscape terrace, which is set above the walking surface by about six inches. You can see the existing curb in the lower left-hand corner, so we want to make this accessible. This plan, set of plans, shows existing and proposed conditions, so on the right-hand side, you can see the integration of a sloped walkway, about 3% slope, which takes you up that six-inch elevation change. And now we'll move into the accessibility for the buildings, so starting all the way over on the east here with Sherred Hall. This is the existing condition at Sherred Hall, which has two steps. And so the proposed condition, again, is a sloped pathway, less than 5% grade, so no need for handrails or landings, that takes you up to the reconfigured stoop there on the right. Here's how that will look in elevation, so very integrated and quiet and appropriate. And then moving over to Seaberry Hall and the chapel, this is a flanking pair of ramps on either side of the chapel building, which we'll get into more detail on. We were asked if there was any way that one ramp could do double duty for accessibility to both buildings. We did look at that, and it is not feasible. It would involve major intervention into the very significant historic interior of the chapel, so we do need a ramp on each side of the building. And these are siblings, but not twins. You can see the distance from the chapel to each entry door is different, so that's leading us to think differently about the two sides. We'll start on the Seaberry side, so this is the existing conditions you can see here. And then that's shown in plan as well. So the stoop gets rebuilt, picking up the thread of that radius stoop that's over at Hoffman Hall on the west side of the site. We're integrating here a new stoop, brownstone cheek walls and copings, and then a ramp that runs alongside the buttresses of the chapel there, and the seat wall that you see in the brown tone helps sort of integrate and mask the geometry of the ramp. And there's no fall condition greater than 30 inches, so we don't need a guardrail here. We only need a handrail. We tried to make it less than 5%, but the grading just doesn't work, so handrail it is. That's how that looks. And then just jumping over to the east side of the chapel, these are the existing conditions. There is a metal ramp there now, but it's not a compliant slope. It's too steep. It's too constrained to solve accessibility that way, so we're going to take a similar approach and run a ramp down the east side of the chapel here. And here, because the door that we're making accessible is further from the chapel, we're actually able to integrate not just the brownstone seat wall, but also a plant bed as well that can have, you know, kind of a boxwood hedge here, set just behind the seat wall. And again, that further integrates these interventions into the site. Here's a rendering of how that looks. And then the last accessibility upgrade is over at Hoffman Hall. This currently has a wheelchair lift outside, which has been a little bit of a maintenance problem, and the goal was a more universal design approach so that, you know, once we have accessibility into the close, we have very good access into each of these buildings that lend themselves to being made accessible. So we're here replacing the lift that's there with a ramp. We looked at two options for this. The bottom right image shows you how a switchback would look, which admittedly would have a more contained footprint, but we felt, once we studied it in three dimensions, really had a greater visual impact as you're looking down the east-west sort of axis of the pathways. So what we're proposing is the top-right image, which is putting it along a single line and integrating it with the entrance to Lord Lard Hall, which is just to the east. And so we see that here in elevation. Here, we do have a 30-inch fall condition, so we will need to provide a guardrail as well as a handrail, and that will match the other guardrail designs on the site. And here you can see how that works in three dimensions, so that that kind of vista as you arrive on the campus and look west is maintained all the way to Hoffman Hall, with the ramp tucked in to your right in this image. This also, because it makes Lord Lard Hall accessible, it's a kind of two-for-one, so down the road, we can integrate accessibility inside the building. A lot of these buildings, you know, they have a stoop, and then you get inside the building, and you're actually not at the principal floor level, you're at a stair landing. So we'll have to do even more to make this building accessible, but this sets us on a very good path in that regard. And then we'll talk about site lighting. So we are restoring or recreating in kind the historic lights that graced each of the entries at the building. We're pursuing... We're pursuing, you know, staff-level approval for those things. But here, we're talking about three different kinds of lights, a couple of wall mounts, four of them, which are around the entry court, and then six pole lights, which we'll talk about. And then we are providing handrail lighting to meet egress lighting requirements at each of the handrails. So just explaining, this is a little bit of an aside, but explaining our approach to recreating and restoring the existing lights that are building-mounted. And then this proposed fixture for commission approval, which there'd be four instances of these. You can see the pink dots in the plan, upper left-hand corner. These are very quiet, very minimal, seven-inch-tall fixtures, which just get us the light we need into that entry court. And then turning to the pole lights, we've selected something that's a little more contemporary. And the reason for that is the optics are very controllable. We have a lot of neighbors on this site. You know, several of the buildings have been converted to condos. So we want to make this a safe and pleasant campus at all hours, but we're choosing a light fixture that has no glare, right? It's very focused approach to how it pools light on the site. There are six locations for these. And then the handrail lighting will not be linear LEDs. These would be the lighting pucks. So you get a little more of a point source, which we think is a bit more historically appropriate than the linear LED lighting on handrails. And then lastly, three locations for something everyone's probably familiar with, which are the security phones. You see these on higher ed campuses all the time. Three of these, these are solar-powered, so they don't need additional wiring, and they're shown in the plan here. Now turn it over to my colleague to talk about signage.
Thank you, Nate. My name is Laura Varachi. I'm principal of LVCK, Bayer Blender Bell's Environmental Graphics and Signage Studio. Apologies for my little frog in my throat today, but we'll get through the signage approach to the site and identifying Vanderbilt's New York City campus. So our signage plan along the exterior of the campus is within the allowable square footage in both the commercial zone and residential zones. I will say that, just as Nate mentioned, being a good neighbor is one of the things that drove our approach to signage on the streetscape. We have to balance the need for identifying this campus as well as being visually, you know, minimal within reason for the neighbors. We, as we began our studies, we looked at other university campuses in Manhattan, and streetscape presence is a common need for all Manhattan campuses. Pageantry is a common solution shared amongst institutions of higher education. When we looked at 10th Avenue, the aesthetic, you know, the architecture of Hoffman is so commanding visually, and yet it's anonymous, which made sense for a seminary that was inward-looking and contemplative. And Vanderbilt is, as James said, proposing a very integrated with the community presence here. And so identifying Vanderbilt on this busy streetscape of 10th Avenue is needed, as well as people getting off the subway, walking south on Ninth Avenue over to 21st Street. Similarly, the architecture is commanding yet anonymous, but we have a lovely tree canopy also that to consider as we placed signage along 21st Street. We're sharing today the entire signage program, the streetscape and the signage within the close, because our system is a unified approach as someone enters and finds their destination within. The most numerous sign types are really the building, individual building identification within the close, and the accessible entry directional IDs that will show. For the streetscape, we're proposing three sign types, a horizontal sidewall-mounted identification for vehicular visibility, a small plinth, and we'll go into detail of each of those, a small plinth for the accessible entry ID and pageantry. The vehicular sign along 10th Avenue runs horizontal on the sidewall, which is set back from the sidewalk. And one of the reasons of the scale is the visibility of Vanderbilt's name, the length of the name. And we've purposely have it as this wrap. So along the residential street, you see solely the V, but along the vehicular avenue side is the full name. And the mounting, the choice of porcelain panels is for the longevity. It's one of the most durable exterior materials, as well as for the minimally invasive mounting that is offered to us using porcelain pans. A frame system will be mounted into the mortar joints of the sidewall, allowing the pans to stay level within this slightly uneven historic wall. It also allows it to be tamper-proof with an innocuous attachment on the flange of the pans. Adjacent to that vehicular identification is a more pedestrian-scaled accessible entry ID, signifying that 21st Street, does have an accessible entry now for the campus. This is the rendered view of those two together. The pageantry proposed takes that rectilinear form and rises it vertical, keeping a minimal protrusion from the existing facades. Again, the attachment for the banner armature will be entered in through the mortar joints so that it can be fully removable. And the pacing of the pageantry proposed aligns with the architectural details of Hoffman and then creates a procession down the street, 21st Street. You know, as Nate said, the architectural entry to this campus was never conceived as the middle of 21st Street. So for a university campus, it's a little hidden. So the slight use of banners marching down the street helps to draw the visitor to the entry gate. I will say that the projection of these banners and the slender proportion are hidden from the neighbors on the north side of 21st Street through the, because of the tree canopy. Moving on to the entrance, as Nate said, at 21st Street, we'll receive a new gate. The existing gate at 20th will remain. In creating an equity across both entrances in terms of signage, we're proposing a simple pairing of a Vanderbilt display case and a GTS plaque acknowledging their history and continued presence on the campus. And this is the 20th Street side and the view of that. Moving into the close, we take the rectilinear form and carry it into the three sign types proposed within the close, which is a wayfinding plinth and a pedestrian accessible entry plinth and an interpretive sign. The existing post and panel was positioned parallel to the pathway. It's very visible. We're proposing to remove that and instead use this plinth, a two-sided plinth positioned perpendicular to the walkway so that both sides can be utilized. This is the form with a lift off of the ground, ground mounting. The interpretive signs, Vanderbilt wants to convey, you know, the history of the site and for newcomers to the campus, learn about the rich history here. So we've proposed two forms, turning the rectilinear form on its side, inviting the viewer to pause and read. And there are proposed just three locations of this, and we're reserving, depending on the amount of content desired, either a double-legged or a single-legged post. The accessible directionals are a proportionally smaller plinth to clearly identify from a distance the accessible symbol. And as you get closer, the read of which hall you're entering. The building ID is a simple form, and we're reserving two layouts. GTS has allowed Vanderbilt to change the name of the building, but that might, there's no plans for that right now, but potentially in the future. And again, here, we're proposing to only penetrate within the mortar joints of the existing brickwork. And as you see in this before and after, it's a smaller footprint on the facade than the existing square format. Thank you. And that closes our presentation.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Commissioner Goldblum?
Regarding the site lighting, is it possible to achieve your goals without the poles by using a landscape light or something lower to the ground? Talking about the directional poles?
Yep. Let me just get back to that slide. So that's these? It would mean many, many bollards, oftentimes sort of distributed between the hardscape and softscape, which we feel, excuse me, would actually be more intrusive. The presence of just six of these, which you can see in the bottom left-hand photo as a precedent, we feel will really kind of blend into the landscape. The photos on the right indicate, you know, where they would be placed. And we feel like they're maximizing performance for minimal intrusion. We did look at many options before we came to this approach.
Okay. And how far back is the gate and the lift set from the edges of the building?
Just take you back to that.
Do you have a dimension on that?
Almost there.
Right.
Just got, I'm going to get to the existing and proposed plans here. There we go.
Yeah. Can't quite see a dimension there.
Let me see if I understand your question.
So Seaberry Hall, bottom-left corner, how far back is the lift from that corner?
The mast of the lift will be attached to the building.
Right.
And the lift itself just, you know, sits less than a foot off of the...
I'm talking about from the bottom going up.
Oh, gotcha.
North. Is it flush with the face of the facade? Is, you know, but not the bay window, obviously, the facade to the left of the bay window?
It matches the corner. The guardrail that'll form the gate of the lift comes seamlessly off the corner of Seaberry.
Uh-huh. And the gate at the top, how far is that set back from the corner of Seaberry Hall?
About two feet. And that is to allow us to do an outswing approach with the gate. The leaves of the gate are three and a half feet. And so we're overhanging the property line by the maximum allowable 18 inches. Right now, the gate swings in, which we think is not as safe as an outswinging gate.
Good. And is there a reason why you chose to place the lift flush with Seaberry as opposed to setting it back or doing something else?
Sure. And we're happy to answer that question. So it gets a bit technical, but lifts that travel 60 inches or less vertically can be designed, I'm just going to go to the elevation, can be designed in this very minimal appearance where just the lift platform itself moves up and down. As soon as we exceed a 60-inch vertical travel distance, we need to create an entire shaft enclosure for it, which we felt was much more visually intrusive. So by placing the lift as far south as we could, we could grade from the sidewalk out on the street up as high as possible and make the vertical travel distance only that 60 inch.
So it's right now on the nose 60?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
Did you look at any way not to have the lift by ramp, slope, walks, et cetera? And that just didn't work? Or what were the implications?
Appreciate that question. We did. And actually, the commission approved an earlier proposal for a ramp by a different architect a few years ago that would basically wrap more hall. Because the vertical elevation change is that, you know, really it's 63 inches, but we're doing our utmost to get it to 60. It's a lot of ramp, and it produces really these canyon-like effects in terms of site walls, completely disrupts the relationship of hardscape and softscape, and we felt was actually more antithetical to Hates' vision for the campus. We will note, there's going to be an elevator inside Seaberry Hall that we're constructing as part of this work. So we have a little bit of redundancy on the accessibility side between the elevator in the building and the lift outside. We know lifts are not, no one loves lifts, but we think this balances all of the competing priorities for the site.
Thank you. That makes a lot of sense.
I had the same question. Can you show a site plan? Just plain, because a lot of the project, and you know, it's very sensitively done. Thank you for a clear presentation. I just want to understand from somebody in a wheelchair coming to this, well, how do they get in? Where are their points of entry?
So the primary entrance to the campus will be that mid-block entrance is 21st Street, is the gate. The gate will have a card reader. It will typically be closed, but there'll be security present right in Seaberry so they can open the gate for visitors. And then someone in a wheelchair has the option to either use the lift or come into Seaberry and use the elevator inside Seaberry.
Oh, you can turn and go into?
Correct. Yeah, there's a door.
The Seaberry building.
Correct. That's right.
Right after the gate.
Correct. And that's actually where our kind of reception and security area is.
And then because the lift would need assistance to...
No, it'll be self-service. You can...
This one that you're proposing outside. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Commissioners, any other questions? Commissioner Jefferson?
Very sensitively done project. Just two issues. The vertical lights, if you go to your diagram, to your perspective, are they pink in color?
No. Sorry about that. That was a diagrammatic technique, but they'll be painted, they'll be black steel, painted.
And the second question, could you explain the gate? You showed several diagrams of gates and...
Sure.
Specifically did this gate with some conceptual framework? What was the concept of the gate?
Yeah. Let me back up to these precedents. So obviously, we ask a lot more of gates today than people did 100 years ago. We're, you know, we want to make them accessible. We'll have an automatic door opener. We'll have a card reader with an interlock and a maglock. So what works very well, we think, is the fixed bar that runs across the gate. And we thought the precedent at Barnard, which is the middle-top photo, was a good one for that, where it sort of creates these panels. You know, there's fixed panels, the moving panels of the gate itself, and then the fixed bar across. Similar is that precedent at Pratt, which is the black-and-white photo in the bottom row. So that's the kind of idea about proportion and approach. But then in terms of style, we felt strongly this should not be something that looked like it was 100 years old because that would be an anachronism. So the style itself is transitional and is meant to really kind of evoke, you know, this new chapter for the campus, which is Vanderbilt's arrival.
So you were really essentially looking at the ironwork, not the framework around it, just the ironwork?
Correct. And then particularly, if you look at the gate elevation on the left-hand, upper-left-hand side, you'll see that, you'll see very often a denser spacing of pickets at the bottom and the top, and they dematerialize in the center, which kind of creates that sense of transparency and breaks down the, you know, very often, if you're not careful, gates have a jailhouse-like effect. And so we're really working to mitigate that while meeting all modern codes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Mayon?
You speak to the decision regarding the proportions. I'm speaking about the main identity signage, the proportion of the black background to the lettering, please.
Do you want to speak to that? Do you want to speak to that?
So the question is about the proportion of black to the white lettering. And we the sidewall is really visually commanding to a person walking by. And we didn't want the the lettering to be situated on too thin of a black frame. And the porcelain is quite a beautiful reflective finish in that it kind of softens. Any reflections makes them watery-like. So we wanted to take advantage of that and have enough surface that it just felt purposeful, sophisticated, and have a balance with the massing of that sidewall. And the name itself is a long name. The nine-inch cap height is actually kind of modest for a commercial district, which is allowed like 120 square feet, but this is 46 square feet of signage. So it was about trying to strike that balance of the mass of the wall and the sign.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilder?
Yeah, quick question about the banners. Were you, with the banners on the facades, were you replacing any banners? And how did you determine the amount?
Yes. Great question. We're not replacing anything as GTS. Being a seminary is more inward-looking. And the, so it is a new intervention proposed, primarily because of the visual mass of these buildings' facades. As you are looking, you're looking at Google Maps. It says the entrance is down this street, 21st Street. And you're usually approaching as a pedestrian from either 9th Ave or 10th Ave. And the idea of the pacing and the determination of the quantity was how to draw a visitor to that gate, which is modest from the edges of, from each avenue. You're not going to see that. And so we're just pacing it and per the building allowance as well. And then having the two flanking the gate as identifying that as the entry point.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Let's go ahead and see if we have any public testimony. Is there anybody in the room who'd like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, let me turn it over to Stephen Thompson for remote testimony.
Those joining via Zoom who wish to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. After which you'll be promoted to panelists. We ask you to unmute yourselves, state your name for the record, and you will have two minutes to speak. The first speaker will be Pamela Wolf.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. I am Pamela Wolf. I'm the president of Save Chelsea. Save Chelsea finds this proposal appropriate and well reasoned with the exception of the number and location of the vertical banners proposed for the West 21st Street building facades. These would be an intrusive advertisement-like presence on this quiet, entirely residential street that is fully within the Chelsea Historic District. We agree with Manhattan Community Board Four's recommendation that banners should be limited to the facades of the 1932 Seaberry Hall and the 1956 Moore Hall, which are less historically sensitive and have brick joints of a height that could better accommodate anchors. Flanking the campus entrance, these banners would be justified by a wayfinding role. We recommend that the anchors for the banner frames and all other proposed signage should be stainless steel, which has a lower coefficient of thermal expansion than aluminum and would better protect surrounding masonry. Save Chelsea recognizes and appreciates the obvious care and thoughtfulness of the rest of this proposal, which is certainly justified as adaptive reuse. Thank you.
The next speaker will be Dave Haloka.
Hi, I am David Haloka, a member of Manhattan Community Board Four, speaking on the board's behalf. CB4 recommends approval with conditions of the proposed alterations. We applaud the applicant's thoughtful proposal. Our recommendation of approval is conditioned on limitation of vertical banner signs to the 21st Street facades of Moore and Seaberry Halls. CB4 objects to the banner signs proposed for attachment to buildings along 21st Street other than Moore and Seaberry Hall, the two of which flank the campus's main entrance. These more modern buildings have brickwork with approximately 3/8-inch mortar joints that can more plausibly accommodate banner anchors without damage to adjacent bricks. The other building facades on the street have both more historically sensitive brickwork and narrower mortar joints. Installation and thermal expansion of anchors at these joints would almost certainly damage adjacent brickwork and should be avoided and should anchorage directly into bricks. The proposed attachment of banners to Hoffman Hall's buttresses should absolutely be avoided for the reason above and to avoid interfering with the rhythmic and highly picturesque effect of the buttresses, especially when viewed obliquely from the adjacent sidewalk. The proposed signage advertising Vanderbilt's presence would extend most of the length of the block and overwhelm its residential character at any rate. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Manor Fatima.
Good morning. My name is Manor Fatima. I'm the advocacy and outreach manager at HTC. HTC believes that the treatment of the landscapes and the accessibility additions were sensitively done by the applicant. We also find the location of the new gate to be appropriate. However, we find the vertical signage program to be a bit excessive. Vanderbilt and the Great Theological, the General Theological Seminary, both have a rich legacy. An excessive signage appears more like a marketing campaign rather than a method of wayfinding or a commemoration of that history. Thank you.
Next speaker is Christina Conroy.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, we are comfortable with the majority of the changes proposed in this lengthy presentation, including the planting, the paving, and access changes. These are modest and won't substantially affect the character of the campus. We think, however, that the sign program needs to be rethought and considerably slimmed down. The size and positioning of some of the signs, like the large Vanderbilt University sign, proposed to anchor onto the stone wall at the corner of West 21st Street and 10th Avenue is both overly conspicuous and potentially detrimental to the historic walls. The example mentioned could certainly be done in a smaller manner without anchoring it to a historic stone wall. We suggest something freestanding that would not damage historic materials, similar to what is being proposed on Slide 72. Further, the enormous size of the sign detracts from the architectural integrity of the building. We find that some of the monolith signs are unnecessarily large for the small amount of information they convey. And there are far too many banners on 21st Street. While we applaud many of the changes that Vanderbilt suggests here, like the return of more bluestone pavers, it is important that signage not detract from the historic and architectural significance of the campus and its buildings. Necessarily, modest identification is fine. Branding and advertising on this historic campus is not. We ask that this aspect of the application be reconsidered. Thank you, Commissioners.
Anyone else joining via Zoom who wishes to speak, please raise your hand. All right, I see none.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to respond to any of the comments? Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? Okay, let's go ahead and close the hearing. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
No move.
Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that?
I would second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. Commissioner Chu, would you like to start this discussion?
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, I first like to start by commending the applicant for a very clear presentation, which outlines every intervention that's being proposed here. I think in general, I find the overall approach to accessibility and identity in this successful adaptive reuse project to be all very appropriate. 21st Street, the new entry utilizing, using the new gate as the primary front door. It looks like it was challenging, I can see, to create a ramp accessibility. But I do see that the applicant has looked at many opportunities and possibilities and selected what they think is the most prudent. It is the approach that has the most minimal effect to the historic character. The questions that were asked previously, because I do believe that the commission would accept ramps in some manner, but I can't see the challenge in this specific case that the ramp would be very long. I tried to figure it out myself, and it would probably switch back, right back to where you started, unfortunately. So I'm comfortable with the approach that's been looked at here. Seaberry, I do quite like the approach of doing the rounded stoop, and the ramp is quite minimal. Having it on both sides provides maximum accessibility, and they're done in discreet manner. I appreciate the seat wall. I think that hides the ramp well, and the planting were possible. Hoffman supports the proposed linear approach. Definitely feels like a more minimal intervention without disturbing the sightlines. In terms of lighting, I think in general, the approach is very discreet. The sconces are minimal. I had the same question that Michael had about the poles and can see that maybe that was the more minimal approach overall. They are quite sleek and dark and would hopefully be not that visible in the bigger scheme of things with the landscape and trees around. I think the only comments that I have, looking at the whole presentation, are a couple of comments about the identity and signage approach. To start with, the corner sign identification that wraps the existing stone wall, I do feel is a bit too aggressive. Having it wrap the corner and applying it onto the wall so directly, I feel is a little bit too, it covers too much of the wall. And I feel like it almost feels like it's being applied unceremoniously onto the wall. The size of the backer, I think, could be reduced. I recognize that the name is long and you need some real estate. I don't think it needs to be as tall as was shown or proposed. And I also wonder about its wrapping the corner and whether or not the identification of the V could be the same font size as the signage of the name, which I don't dispute. I think the name of the, the font size of the name is okay. It's really the backer that is the concern. And also the sense that it doesn't quite feel like it floats on the wall. It feels like it's actually applied straight onto it with no. So I would like to see a lighter and more minimal approach there. There are lots of comments about the banners running along 21st Street. I do question that approach as well. To some extent, I wonder in this case if less is more, because when I look at it and I can see the need to identify the main entry at the gate, but I almost feel confused because of the number of banners. And an attempt was made, I think, to try to respect the facades, but I don't think that it is that clear where the banners are placed on the existing buildings. The buttresses, I do feel are a bit confused by these. And I'm wondering if another approach could be done that really centers them more towards where you want people to see the entry, which is at the gate, and maybe not run the whole street from the corners. I think the signage on the corners of 9th and 10th Avenues do a significant job. And then really bringing your eye to the main entry is a part of the goal here in terms of wayfinding. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Kumbay?
I concur with the thoughts of my fellow commissioner. And I believe he stated things very, very appropriately. Overall, what's being proposed, I do find it appropriate. But pointing out, I do have some trepidations about the signage, especially along 21st Street, I do find it to be excessive. And it should be potentially just maintained at the entry area. And I also do believe that the sign on the corner attached to the existing wall can be relooked at and potentially its size and geometries.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilder?
Yes, thank you. Overall, I find the application appropriate. I like the introduction of the bluestone paving. I think the ramps at the entrances to the buildings are nice. I like that you were able to kind of maintain a little bit of the landscaping around there to kind of hide the ramps. I like the way the stoops were designed. So I appreciate all of those things, and I find all of them appropriate. I think my concerns are similar to fellow commissioners. I couldn't really find the justification of the amount of banners. I do, I understand it, but I don't think it serves the purpose that, or serves the purpose the best way. I think there could be another way to draw attention to the entrance without having the amount of banners that is potentially taking away from the facades. And also, the corner sign, I think it's a tough position to be in with such a long name. And I don't know if stacking the text makes sense, or, but I do think it takes up considerable amount of the existing wall. And I think you should probably work on the size of the signage. And maybe those, between the banners and that sign, they have some sort of relationship where they are speaking a similar language that help each other out. But yeah, those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
First, I want to say it's great to see Vanderbilt taking over this important historic property, preserving it and using it. And I think that's great. And I agree with my fellow commissioners, a very good presentation. And in general, I'm supportive. I wanted to talk about two things. When one talks about lighting, having done a fair amount of lighting design, there are two separate issues. One is what the fixtures, poles, et cetera, look like. And the other is the quality of light. And for security, you need to get above people's heads that if you just had three-foot-high bollards, you would have a real security issue. So I think this lighting solution is totally appropriate and is good. I also think that in general, modern fixtures are much more energy-efficient than historic fixtures, have better light control, an issue you raised. So I'm in support of that. I think in terms of the signage, I think my concern is the banners. I think the banners at the entrance are good for denoting the entrance. I could live with a reduction of the other banners by 50%, but I realize most of my fellow commissioners are probably recommending getting rid of more. I think the signage at the corner is fine.
Thank you. Commissioner Mann?
I think it's a great project, great adaptive reuse of, you know, an important historic asset by university. Lots of great, you know, restoration work here, not commented on upon too much, probably because it's all staff level, but you know, all the bluestone and brownstone, really great work. The accessibility was a masterclass. You pulled every single tool out of the toolkit. I'm gonna download this presentation and share it at the office for the junior architects there. Thank you for that. I'm okay with the signage at the corner. I think the number of banners could be slightly reduced working with staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Thanks. Same on the ramps and stuff. I think that's all fine. I think the lift is fine, totally appropriate and subtle and well-integrated. I think that the lighting poles are acceptable and appropriate because they're fairly background and simple. And the other, the sconces are also fine. Like others, my, my concerns focus on the signage. I think Stephen's comments about the, the corner sign are, are relevant and, and good, good, good comments. I think that the applicant might look at with staff, maybe instead of having the sign on the wall, on top, you know, set, set it back a little bit on the back end of the top wall, maybe, you know, along with making it smaller, it might, might make it less percussive onto the architecture. For me, the banners, I don't think anybody's gonna trip over these buildings and think it's a townhouse or a bodega or anything. I, I think it's pretty clear that it's a collegiate Gothic building. That would probably be a college. So I don't think that there's a lot of mistaking that could be happening. And I think that the comments of the community board are, are good. I would seek to limit the banners to the more modern buildings. And I think that the other signage is, is quite lovely, actually. The stanchions inside, the, the building IDs, the gate, all good.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
But there are a couple of things that I think are very special here. The linking of the ramps, this planting, it's an incredibly beautiful way of, of newer ramps and the planting material. It's very elegant. And I think the gate was carefully thought through and... The only other issue is this corner signage, which I think is appropriate because it's at the corner. Busy street and I think it's a, it's a symbol of a change. It's different from what we would expect and announces what's happening inside of this. So I can accept a corner sign.
Okay, thank you. So it looks like overall, the commissioners were very pleased with this project, but that they suggested that you work with staff on the signage. I think that the commissioners made some suggestions on the, the corner signage, that the presence of the signage as it is, is a little bit too strong. And I think you can listen to some of their comments. And then in terms of the number of banners, most of the commissioners felt that the number of banners was too excessive and maybe, you know, focus them more at the entrance. Commissioner Chu, would you feel comfortable reading this motion with those changes? Thank you.
Okay. In the, in the case of LPC 2603892440 West Twenty First Street and 180th Avenue, the in the Chelsea Historic District, an assembly, an assemble of English collegiate Gothic-style buildings around a closed, designed primarily by Charles Coolidge Haight and built largely between 1881 and 1902. The application is to create an, a main entrance by replacing West Twenty First Street Gate and modifying the alleyway. Install signage throughout the complex and alter the close by installing barrier and a barrier-free access lifts and ramps and light fixtures. I recommend approval, sorry. I recommend approval before I read through this long, lengthy list. I just wanted to echo the comment made earlier that the applicant should work with staff on the number of banners, an appropriate attachment where they do, where they are going to stay and a look at the corner signage, work with staff on those two items. But I do recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will support the adaptive reuse of this long, block-long seminary campus and its close, which was originally designed for quieter inward-facing religious purposes for a new outward-facing university use, that the removal of the existing gate at the West Twenty First Street entrance and redesign of the alleyway will not eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed gate with integrated lighting will be in keeping with gates found on other institutional campuses of this type in age and urban settings, and the design details and materials will harmonize with the adjacent buildings, that the alleyway will be configured to provide barrier-free access to the main entrances to the campus, including a lift, modified stairs and bluestone paving with brownstone stucco knee walls, all of which will harmonize the materials and features found throughout the campus, that the new entrance will lead to a rounded bench and planting area with the university seal in the pavement, thereby creating a modest focal point in the close. That the reconfiguration of the green spaces, planting beds, lawns and pathways will utilize a consistent materials palette, including bluestone pavers, brick curbs and metal railings, and will provide universal accessibility throughout the campus, that the proposed ramps at multiple entrances facing the close will provide barrier-free access in the least intrusive manner possible and will be partially screened by planters and seating areas and are designed using materials and details that harmonize with the buildings, including bluestone and brownstone, that the proposed light fixtures, including pole lights, security stands, handrail lights and wall-mounted lights are simple in design and will meet security requirements for the open space without interfering with the existing historic wall-mounted light fixtures and will not draw undue attention to themselves, that the proposed signage throughout the close, including building identifiers, interpretive and directional sign plaques, event boards, panels and posts, are simply designed and well-scaled to their installation locations and are sufficiently limited in quantity so as to not overwhelm the buildings or landscape, that the proposed metal sign bands with dimensional letters at the Twenty First Street and Tenth Avenue corner will be well-placed with careful and limited penetration points into the historic fabric, that the presence of banners is a typical feature of the campus, campus design, and while the seminary was an inward-turning institution, the new use of the building by major university in outward-facing urban engagement calls for some use of banners and that is to be worked at with staff, the quantity. That the proposed work will not diminish the special architectural or historic character of the buildings or close, or the historic district, that the proposed banners on Twenty First Street facade will harmonize the verticality of the buildings and are spaced in such a way to identify the entry point and the boundary of the campus without overwhelming the building facades or the block. However, actually, I've already covered that. I think that's it. And congratulations, beautiful project.
Thank you. And Commissioner Kumbay, would you second that motion?
Sorry.
Absolutely second.
Should vote first.
Okay. Mark, will you call the vote?
Vice Chair Master?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Kumbay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder? With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Congratulations. This is a wonderful project that's been approved with modifications. Please continue to work with staff. Thanks. We're ready for the next item.
All right, we'll move to public hearing item number three, LPC 25-09456. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 499, Lot 6, 102 Green Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District, a store-and-loft building designed by Henry Vernbach and built in 1881, later altered in 1941. And the application is to legalize the removal of cast iron vault light steps.
Okay, Commissioners, the applicants have entered via Zoom. Adam, you now have control of the presentation. If you could just click on your screen and then you can advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse, please state your name for the record and you may begin.
Adam Cullen, Principal of that consulting, where the applicant have recorded on the project. Stated, this is a request to replace the existing cast iron bullet steps with diamond plate steps. The building is located in historic Cast Iron District of Soho, between Prince Street and Spring Street. Here, we start with a photo of the historic condition that was originally there. I just don't know the date, but quite a long time ago, and the current condition on the right is where people are utilizing steps that are there now. This is the original condition when we came into the project. The left side on the north was already covered in diamond plate. The right side was exposed to cast iron bullet lights. They are damaged. To get into the next slide, you'll see, this is the north steps we seen from below. If it were best to kind of zoom in, there was a difficult...
Adam, 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 can you please speak slower so that you're coming across a little garbled, it's a little hard to hear you. So just speak slower, please.
No problem. Do you want me to go back or?
No, no, you're good, but just speak slower. Yeah.
Yes, sir. So on the north side, this is looking from below. We exposed as much as we could from the underside. It was all basically open. We took photos of the damage, as you can see on the north side. It was severely cracked, missing pieces of glass. It was actually partially supported with steel framing and kind of attempts to shore it in place. On the south side, where it was exposed, we zoomed in as best we could to kind of show that this was actually repaired. It was gondoned and sealed and painted and sort of, while it looks intact, it was wound up being much worse as we started to expose the conditions. When we originally approached the LPC, we came up with this detail, which was, turned out to be ambitious, but basically involved restoring the full structural vault from below, maintaining the original diamond plate on the horizontal service and attempting to basically build some sort of steel, basically framing underneath and hopefully stitch this pieces back together and sort of fasten them in place to a backup steel frame. What was left afterward was in such disrepair that that plan basically kind of fell apart. We do, I mean, we were able to maintain all the structural system, but the cast iron lights themselves, the cast iron pole lights themselves were just in too, too poor condition to be salvaged. This is what remained after all was said and done. That was not just, you know, pieces, I'll say smaller than like four inches. We, this piece that's basically fully intact on the bottom here is the second riser, or I'm sorry, second tread from the street level. If I go back, can I go back? So basically this piece, you guys can see my mouse, but the, the second tread here. Yeah, tread. So what was done was we installed diamond plate back on the north side and on the south side. Originally, this was intended to be sort of a temporary install because we didn't want to leave a hole in the sidewalk. The condition looked good, so we tried to approach as a sign-off, which now makes this a legalization, to keep this in place and we're hoping to do so. To give some precedence in the area, we walked streets specifically between Spring and Prince to show locations where there are diamond plate steps. That's at 95 Green, 114 and 96, is sort of pretty equidistant, if you will, from 102 Green Street. And then that's the completion of our presentation.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Commissioner Ginsburg?
So I have two questions. First, this was work without a permit, but, and I understand there may have been a time constraint, but you could have contacted Landmark Staff. Was there a reason you did not?
Well, originally, it wasn't intended to be a permanent installation. We were working with the client to see what other options we could pursue, such as replacement in kind. And basically, once it was in, as again, meant not to leave a hole in the sidewalk, we approached LPC. Yeah.
For the original work, did you file anything with the staff?
Correct, yes, we did. It was an approved project to do full replacement with that slide that I had earlier that showed the stitching back, yeah.
And the second question is, you can buy new steel or cast iron with the glass circles in it. Did you look at doing that?
We did. The lead times were very long and it was very expensive. I don't have the numbers on that, but that's what was conveyed to us by the general contractor.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Okay. Let's move to public testimony. Is there anybody in this hearing room that would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I'm gonna turn it over, turn it over to Stephen Thompson.
Those joining via Zoom who wish to testify, please raise your hand. You'll have two minutes to speak, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have two minutes. The first speaker is Manuwa Fatuma.
Good morning. My name is Manuwa Fatuma. I'm the advocacy and outreach manager at HTC. HTC finds this proposal to be inappropriate. The products required to repair, to repair and replace the damaged vault lights are commercially available. HTC strongly urges the applicant to replace or repair the vault light steps in kind as they are a trademark of the Soho District. Thank you.
The next speaker is Christina Conroy.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, today's agenda states that legislation of diamond plate cladding over historic vault lights is requested by the applicant. We found it almost impossible to tell what the conditions of the vault lights were before removal and how and where the applicant proposes to reuse the pieces. This, of course, is the result of work having been done without a permit. Removal of the historic vault lights is not an action that serves the mission of the Historic Landmarks Commission or Historic Preservation of New York City. Vault lights are a character-defining feature of this historic district. The removal has rarely, if ever, been approved by this commission. We're skeptical that the broken pieces can be successfully attached to the new diamond plate in a safe manner that will hold up over time. Replacement cast iron and glass vault light units are available from several manufacturers and their use on this building should be investigated. Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, seeing no other raised hands, I'll note for the record that Manhattan Community Board two recommends approval.
Would the applicant like to address any of the comments?
No.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? Okay, Corey would like to say something.
Yeah, I just wanted to note, as was raised in testimony, that, you know, there are, on occasions, the commission has approved or legalized removal of cast iron vault lights, but almost perhaps without exception, all that come to mind for me are cases where those vault lights were concealed by diamond plate or maybe even under concrete paving and had been that way since before designation of the district. So I think it is unusual and perhaps new to consider this case where some of the vault So I think it is unusual and perhaps new to consider this case where some of the vault light steps, not all of them, I think, on the left side, maybe they were covered at designation, on the right, they were exposed to kind of consider that as a straight legalization to cover them. So just wanted to make that differentiation between ones that were covered at times of designation and ones that were not.
The left bay was covered prior to designation.
I think it may be something that the photos were taken long enough ago that we're not 100% sure about that, but without a doubt, the ones on the right that you see there have been exposed, at least since then.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and close the hearing. Commissioner Wilder, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So I'm over.
Commissioner Kuebe, would you second that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you like to start this discussion?
I will. I think the vault lights should, you've now stabilized the structure, so the long lead of time to get new vault lights is not an issue anymore. I think they definitely should be done on the south step and can be curious what my fellow commissioners say, but we should consider also doing it in the north step to keep a remnant of an important historic feature.
Thank you. Commissioner Mann?
I agree with Commissioner Ginsburg.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, same thing here.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Jefferson? Does anybody have a different opinion?
No, I do think they should be at the north as well.
Okay, I think, I think that was what.
Well, I was asking, but that's.
Okay, it seems like that was, I think that was all the, that was the intention of the other commissioners. Okay. Corey, did you want to say something or you?
I do think, because maybe we're not 100% certain about the north side, if for, if for example, some of those or all of those were missing, then I think that's a different situation where we couldn't compel those to go back, but certainly on the south steps we could. So.
Can we leave that to the discretion of the staff to verify?
We can. Let me just, I need to check the. Okay, I think that would be sort of a fall under the level of staff work if they didn't have to do that piece. So I think what that means is we actually need to deny this application today. Give us just a second and we'll, we'll put that together.
All right, so this motion is going to be denied because the removal of the cast iron vault lights at both bays without replacing any of them in kind, we believe, has resulted in the loss of significant architectural feature of the building and the streetscape. Oh, and would somebody second that?
Second.
Okay, thank you. And Mark, do we call a vote?
Vice Chair Master?
Do I say aye?
Say aye, no, yay.
Okay, aye.
Aye. Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Chu? Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Kuebe?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder?
Aye.
With nine in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Okay, that has been denied. Okay, let's move to the next item.
All right, next item is public hearing item number four. LPC 26-03891. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 1119, Lot 43. 26 to 30 West 67th Street in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. This is a modern style office building designed by Coen Peterson Fox Associates and built in 1978-79. The application is to demolish the building and construct a new building.
Good morning Commissioners, Ward Dennis with Higgins Quasbarth and Partners. I'll be presenting today with Dan Lobitz from Ramza. The proposal for 30 West 67th is to demolish an existing 1979 studio building and to construct a new eight story residential building. The proposed building has been designed for senior affordable housing and is part of a project, larger project that Xtel is undertaking on the block, the rest of which is not within the historic district. The proposed building is appropriate to this block of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District in terms of its overall scale, massing, materials and detail. Just to locate the project for you, we are on the south side of West 67th between Central Park West and Columbus. The balance of the ABC site, Xtel site, is shown hatched on the lower left of the 67th Street block. Project team includes Xtel as the development company, Robert A.M. Stern Architects, SBJ Group are the architects of record. We're also joined today by Freed Frank and Cozen Public Strategies. Again, showing the location of the building, we're at the southern end of the historic district. Everything to the south of us on our block is outside of the historic district. The existing building, it is a 14 story glass and metal building, granite base. It sets back at the sixth story for about a five story midsection and then at the top of the building has a series of one story setbacks. It is, I think, clearly not a building for which the Upper West Side Historic District was designated. It was constructed in 1979, so only 11 years before the historic district designation, designed by Coen Peterson Fox as part of the Phase One expansion of the ABC site, which we'll look at in a moment. Some details of the building, you can see on the left how it, how it steps back. The building occupies the full lot to the, to the south. And as I mentioned, has a solid base with a garage door and a single entry granite walls, not a very inviting sidewalk condition. Looking at the history of the development of the site, to our east is the main buildings of the Derland Riding Academy. Those buildings are within the historic district and are not part of this application today. Contributing buildings within the district. Our site outlined in red here was historically a series of stable buildings that at one point were the Derland Riding Academy annex, constructed in the mid to late 19th century. In 1955, the American Broadcasting Company took over the Derland Riding Academy building and converted it to their television studios. Sometime between 1955 and 1960, ABC acquired the annex site and demolished the buildings on that site. You can see this in this circa 1965 view. The site is vacant with the Riding Academy in the background there behind the, behind the trailer. ABC, as I mentioned, undertook an expansion on the block in two phases. The first phase, starting in the 1970s, KPF designed two buildings for that phase of the work. The seven Lincoln Square building in the center and then 30 West 67th Street on the left. And again, you can see those sort of series of setbacks as the building rises up to 14 stories. The first phase also included the conversion of the Armory Building on 66th Street. At the time of the completion of this first phase, Paul Goldberger, writing in The Times, noted that neither of the two ABC structures is a masterpiece, but that's not the point. Intelligently designed, discreet buildings, but all of this glass does create a sense of sleekness that is at odds with the mood of the old apartment buildings. Clearly noting how it does not fit in with the character defining features of this particular block and of the historic district in general. In the late 1980s, ABC undertook Phase Two expansion that included development of the rest of the block and notably an enlargement of the 30 West 67th Street building to the south. You can see in the left image, a section, 30 West 67th Street is the darker gray to the right and the 66th Street expansion to the left. You can see that the main lobby was on 66th Street, coming up to a central core within the building that was shared between the two buildings. It's pretty clear from this that the original 30 West 67th Street building was designed with this expansion in mind. It's also notable that although this expansion was completed by the time of the historic district designation, the designation actually bifurcates the building. So the part of the building on the right in the section that is in the darker gray is within the historic district. The part of the building to the left was left out of the historic district. And I think when you look at West 67th Street, which Dan will be showing you in more detail later, it's pretty clear that the, the thinking of the commission at that time was really that this was a space holder between historic buildings, contributing buildings on the block. At the time of the completion of Phase Two, Goldberger went back and looked again at the enlargement and the overall ABC project. And he noted particularly with the 30 West 67th building, although it's a laudable attempt to blend a modern structure into a distinguished residential block, the building has far too much glass and far too little in the way of architectural ideas. I think at this point, it's important to look at how the Upper West Side Designation Report talks about building styles. It's notable that unlike other historic districts, the Upper West Side Historic District Report does not identify no style or non-contributing buildings. However, it does have a catchall of modern architecture for basically all of the buildings from the mid 1930s forward. And the Designation Report notes that the period of significance for the district is really 1880 to 1930. So it seems that all the buildings, whether or not they were actually of a modern style, are categorized as modern in that later period. And it includes, the modern style designation includes a number of buildings from the 1970s and 1980s, buildings that I like 30 West 67th Street, which I think are clearly not the buildings for which the historic district was designated. And the commission has, in past applications within this district, looked at these buildings on a case by case basis and has approved demolition of both 8 West 70th Street, the Con and Jacobs Building from 1949 on the left, as part of a project at Sherif Israel, which was not constructed. And then also the 207 West 79th Street Building on the right, which was replaced by a larger residential building. That was in 2014. So with that background, I'm going to hand it over to Dan to take us through the design for the new building. Yeah, you can use the arrows, you can use them now.
Thank you, Ward. Good morning Commissioners. I'm Dan Lobitz from Ramza, Robert A.M. Stern Architects, and I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity this morning to show you our design for 30 West 67th Street. You can see our site, I get once again here in yellow, it's at the heart of the West 67th Street. It's the artist colony block. It's a very distinguished and historic location, home to many important figures, but more notably for us today, eight very distinguished studio buildings, which is very interesting, New York typeology. And we consider it an honor and a great responsibility to make a contribution on this block. And so here, you can see, this is a elevation of the south side of the block, Central Park is on the left, and then you can see our building at the center in context. And our goal really was to create a building, is to create a building that fits in, that feels like it grows out of this historic context, but at the same time makes its own statement. And I think something of note is that the tallest building is directly on the park and then the other buildings vary in height, but they're lower than that building. And then looking at the north side of the block, it's a similar condition with the tallest buildings basically adjacent to the block and then stepping down. And of course, it's a wonderful array and assortment of buildings. They're, they're varied, but they're sort of of a family, is what I would say. And here you can see our concept for our building and how it fits in into the block. And you can see it's roughly the same height as number 40, West 67th, our neighbor to the right, but taller than the Derland Riding Academy on the left, and then a bulkhead that makes it slightly taller than the neighbor to the right. Here you can see a cross section through our proposed building and the dashed line beyond is the ABC building currently existing on the site. And you can see that our building is considerably lower, considerably less bulky. We have a 30 foot rear yard setback because it's a residential use. And then there's a garden at grade and the building is partially built out to the rear of the lot also at the ground floor. We have two basement levels and basically they're occupying the footprint of the basement of the existing building. And then here you can see the elevation of the existing building on the right and then our proposed building on the left. And you can see that we're proposing a masonry building that is basically classical in terms of its character. It's a combination of brick and masonry with a symmetrical composition, a base, a middle, a top, and a sort of interweaving of brick and light masonry. It has a bit of a silhouette at the, at the rooftop, at the skyline, and the bulkhead is conceived as a pavilion. Here is an east elevation and so you can see our building on the left and the existing building on the right, and you can see the tall blank face of the existing building. We're considerably lower and we're proposing some lot line windows at the upper floors of our building. And this is a comparison of the south elevation. The existing building is built out to the rear of the lot, so it has a blank face. And when our neighbor to the south is taken down, that blank face would appear. And again, we are set back 30 feet from the lot line and of course have a residential facade, again, symmetrical, a little simpler than the 67th Street face, but basically again, classical in its composition. At the roof of the ground floor level, we have some mechanical equipment, low mechanical equipment that will be concealed from view with screening. And then looking to the other side, the west elevation, you can see in gray, we're cutting through our neighbor number 40 and we're including some. and we're including some lot-line windows that look out into that light well. And then this is a ground floor plan. And our main entrance is on the upper right. We're proposing a secondary convenience entrance for amenity spaces on the left. The ground floor includes, of course, the typical residential elements, a desk, a mailroom, a package room, amenity spaces. As I mentioned, a little garden in the rear and then some mechanical spaces as well. And this is the second floor. And you can see basically it's a building organized with a corridor, a double-loaded corridor running east-west and residential units facing north and facing south. At this second level, the southerly units have little private gardens on the rooftop of that ground floor base. And this floor is typical running up through the building. Overall, the building has about 90 residential units. It's eight stories tall. This is a plan of the rooftop. And you can see on the bottom of the plan, the mechanical bulkhead. And then we also have a little shared garden space on the roof for residents with some covered areas under a pergola and some green planting areas. And so I think the context buildings here are very important to us. I'm just going to talk to you about a few of them. I'm not going to talk about all of them. And just to show you this grouping, I think what's very typical on this block is that the buildings pretty much rise very simply without a setback from the street to the roof. But very often they have an interesting silhouette of some type so that when you look from across the street on the sidewalk, you see an interesting silhouette against the skyline. And looking again at the street elevation on the south side, this time with the materials, you can see that basically every building on the block is some type of a brick. Each one is a different color, often a different type of brick, different patterns. And then in some combination with masonry, either stone or cast stone. And so we wanted to build on that context. Once again, on the north side, you see a similar condition. And so here's the landmark Derland Riding Academy. And of course, it's typified by these beautiful orange Roman bricks and tall arched windows that light the riding floor. That's our neighbor to the left. Our neighbor to the right is this Rosario Pandella Building with these groupings of leaded glass windows gathered together with decorative copper spandrel panels. It's a little relentless in its expression, but in terms of scale and in terms of texture, it does fit in beautifully with the block. And then 50 West 67th Street, which is a neo-Renaissance building. It's a combination again of brick and stone. The brick has this lovely diaper pattern. There is a nice detail with a curving faux balcony, which you can see on the upper right. And then also some of the windows are grouped, gathered into two-story groupings. And then going across the street, this is the Des Artis Building. Of course, a very notable building. Interestingly, this is the one studio building that actually has double-height rooms and double-height windows facing south. All of the others on the block face north. But of course, it's masonry and light brick with Gothic Revival detailing, beautiful detailing. Number 17 has a granite base and brick in interesting patterns, nice detail around the windows, a relatively light palette. And then number 33, the Atelier, with this pale pink brick in a Flemish bond pattern. Again, some windows grouped into two-story vertical readings, a nice combination of brick and stone. And so this is our proposed palette. And again, a building of brick and stone, a granite base with limestone and cast stone detailing in combination with this Belden Alamo brick. We've used this brick on two other projects in New York, and it has a lovely warm tone. And it has a beautiful handmade feel. And we think it'll fit in beautifully and complement the brickwork of the neighboring buildings. And then dark metal windows, some green metal detailing at the rooftop. And here you can see these materials called out on the overall elevation. And you can see how we have more stone at the there's a one-story base that rises in places to become a two-story base. And then the stone picks up and frames symmetrical elements as it rises through the building, culminating in a two-story reading at the top of the building. And then a sort of loggia element at the rooftop that again builds on that idea of creating a nice silhouette at the skyline. And then beyond, you can see the mechanical bulkhead, which is conceived as a decorative pavilion. And now, street views. This is a view from the north. If you were able to stand back far enough to look straight across, you can see how the building relates to the Riding Academy on the left and number 40 on the right. Again, it fits in, we feel, but at the same time, it makes its own statement. It has its own personality. And you can get a better sense of the combinations of materials with the banding at the ground floor, sort of mimicking rustication with alternating bands of brick and stone and then rising through the building with stone coining at the corners. And then again, that loggia element at the rooftop. This is looking diagonally toward the east from the north side of the street. Once again, with the Riding Academy on the left and number 40 on the right. So you can see what it looks like as you're approaching along the sidewalk. And then this is looking from the west. In the foreground on the right is a little distorted, but it's the Des Artis Building. And then some details. Here's the ground floor with the main entrance on the left, the convenient entrance on the right. We're insetting the ground floor windows and doing these planter boxes marching along. Some buildings on the street have that detail of the planter boxes. The Des Artis actually has window boxes on deep-set sills. But we like the idea of getting a little more greenery here as well. And then you can see the symmetrical character of the facade, the metalwork detailing at the second floor, these decorative railings that imply the idea of a piano noblet at the second floor, but really it's just a gesture in the manner of many other residential buildings in New York. You can see we have divided light in-swing casement windows. There'll probably be dark painted aluminum and again, the combination of brick and stone. Here's the main entrance with a sort of typical fabric canopy that you see in many New York buildings. I'd say most New York residential buildings, bronze entry doors, a deeply set segmental arched opening. And you can see how it relates also to the rustication. And then looking from the opposite direction, the door has a similar design, but with a metal marquee. This is the detail of that second-floor railing, which has the character of a turned metal spindle and a gentle shallow curve on each of the ends. And then straightaway in the middle windows, these are bronze lanterns to flank the entrance doors, custom bronze lanterns that we think will be really beautiful. They're like the jewelry of the building, nice ornaments for the street. Here you can see that a planned detail of the deeply set windows at the ground floor. These deep openings are framed in stone, the granite base, and the alternating brick and stone banding. Here's a view of that Level 2 window. Again, the in-swing casement windows. This has operable side lights and a fixed center. This is at the upper floors where we're gathering two windows into a vertical grouping at the flanking edges. Here's another detail zooming in at that upper facade. And the facade steps very gently with subtle differences in plane. And then I think I have another. Here's a detail of how the facade is setback. It's outlined in red on the right and then a drawing on the left. And you can see here, each of these setbacks, they're only a couple of inches, but they still get, will get a shadow and a nice expression and articulate the massing of the building in, we think, a sophisticated way. And this is a view looking down at our rooftop amenity. You could see the mechanical bulkhead at the back and then covered pergolas, covered seating areas, and then some planting to create an amenity space for the residents, but also something nice for the taller neighbors to the north to look at. And that's our design. We, again, our goal is to create something that fits in and that makes its own statement and that makes a meaningful contribution to the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Commissioner Goldblum and then Commissioner Jefferson.
On the facade that we're looking at now, what's the dimension of the setback from the forward planes to the recessed planes on the shaft of the building?
The total depth altogether is six inches. So there are two increments there. It's zero and then goes to two and then four and then six.
So if you're at the top, the center is zero and then minus two, minus four?
Right.
Thanks.
Commissioner Jefferson?
It's an odd question. What architectural facade style inspiration for this? You have one?
Well, it's, I guess I would call it Tudor, but it's a sort of abstracted neoclassicism that we thought was very fitting for this street. Because really, each of the buildings, none of them has extremely clear style. They're all sort of more eclectic in terms of their actual expression, often a combination of details from different periods and different styles.
Any other questions? Commissioner Wilder?
Quick question about the top-floor windows. What was the reason for increasing the height there versus the other floors?
Well, we were intentional about varying the character of the windows. We didn't want the building to be too repetitive and too relentless. And so we have combinations of narrower and wider windows. And then the top floor, we made that floor taller to basically work in conjunction with these two-story groupings to create the idea of a crown or a, you know, a base, a middle, and a top for the building so that it feels like a more meaningful termination.
Commissioner Mayhew?
Thank you. What are the solid elements at the bottoms of some of the windows and portions of other windows?
Those are for HVAC.
The significance or adjacency of studio buildings was noted several times. Can you speak to the relationship to your proposed design of that typology?
Well, again, interestingly, most of the studio buildings do not, facing the street, do not have the double-height studio windows. They look just like any other building. And so in terms of use, again, we're trying to make a building with affordable housing. And so the idea of doing actual double-height rooms didn't make sense to us. But we thought that it was still important to tie into the expression and the character of the neighboring buildings.
What is the solid element at the ground level, roughly at the center?
The
Door, I'm guessing.
Oh, that's an exit door.
Exit, thank you.
That's an exit door, yeah.
And then finally, can you speak to the sort of design concept behind the loggia element at the roof, please?
Yeah, the loggia element, again, many of the neighboring buildings have some sort of a feature at the top. And sometimes it's a pediment, a sort of flat pediment that just grows out of the wall. Or sometimes it's a grouping of piers. Sometimes the parapet just steps up and down. But generally, many of the buildings on the street have some sort of an expression so that when you're looking up at the building from across the street, even though there are no setbacks, the actual top of the building has some kind of a silhouette that creates a nice feature and sort of, you know, meets the sky in a pleasing way.
Any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and move to public testimony. We have some people that have signed up in advance. So I will call you up. And then you have three minutes to speak, and please state your name. The first speaker is Megan Fitzpatrick from Landmark West.
Hello, Commissioners, Megan Fitzpatrick speaking on behalf of Landmark West. Our Certificate of Appropriateness Committee notes that the proposed new design for 30 West 67th Street is technically and architecturally correct via its digestion of the iconic West 67th Street Artist Colony context, but it still remains inappropriate. Rather than honoring the history and deferring to it as the current Coen-Petersen Fox structure does, the proposal seeks to be revisionist, creating a pastiche that would lead many to assume and had always been there and thus take attention from the bona fide landmarks that compose the National Register Artist Colony. Further, in pursuing the demolition and replacement of this landmark, we would lose the last remaining purpose-built vestige of ABC campus on the Upper West Side. A different type of studio building, 30 West 67th Street, was purpose-built by ABC for office and production use. They commissioned the young firm of KPF to design the building alongside other buildings and conversions, firmly establishing the broadcasting company's presence in the neighborhood and the firm's presence in the field of architecture. The existing modern-style building is not an eyesore nor an afterthought. It is an integrated part of the streetscape, designed to pay homage to the many significant apartment buildings and studios that surround it. Its setbacks and scale complement the surrounding landmarks, allowing their architectural details to stand out rather than compete. We must ask ourselves what the city truly wants to prioritize. The current structure is a broad candidate for adaptive reuse, particularly for housing, and demolishing it would run counter to the city's own city of yes proposals, which specifically promote the reuse of existing office buildings and the goal of a carbon-neutral future. Preservation and progress are not mutually exclusive aims. Here, they can and should work hand-in-hand. Moreover, if affordability is being invoked as justification for demolition, there must be transparency about what that affordability entails. While we know LPC does not regulate use, the argument for demolition of a landmark structure is being framed in those terms and thus deserves scrutiny. Our committee also has grave concerns about the impact demolition could have on the adjacent
I'm so sorry, that's time if you wouldn't mind summarizing your last statement.
This building is part of a massive site, most of which is currently under demolition. It's the only purpose-built protected remnant of the broadcasting history that lasted seven decades on the Upper West Side. Our committee recommends the rejection of this inappropriate application. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Arlene Simon.
My name is Arlene Simon. I founded Landmark West in 1985 and was present at the birth of the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District, Mark may remember. I urge you to deny this outrageous request to demolish 30 West 67th Street. Almost 100 people testified in support of the designation of the historic district. There were serious conversations and discussions regarding the southern end of the proposed district. Gene Norman at the time was clever enough to have the hearing on the Upper West Side at the Universalist Church because he knew the amount of people that were going to show up for this hearing. Many who testified at the hearing included former mayor John Lindsay. He felt strongly about protecting the south side of West 67th Street between Central Park West and Columbus Avenue. The wisdom of including that block in the historic district has been proven by which was transpired since its designation. The demolition requested before you is truly an audacious one. The building in question is not a no-style taxpayer. It is a modern-style building whose design at the time of its construction was hailed by Paul Goldberg, who wrote in the New York Times on July 16, 1975, "as intelligently designed," I'm quoting him, "and discreet, and exactly the type of background structure appropriately for West 67th Street." As he wrote, it was not a masterpiece.
It's time, please wrap up your final thoughts.
That was exactly the point. He hailed it as a testament to the fact that large corporations and private citizens, helped by a reasonably sympathetic architect, can work together to avoid disaster. The question before you today is can you, can...
I'm so sorry, you are well past your given two minutes. We need to move on to the next speaker. You've passed your two minutes.
I would like to finish the statement.
It's important that we grant all members of the public the same amount of time, but thank you.
I don't hear you, I'm sorry.
You can please complete your final sentence.
Mark, I don't...
It's Arlene, Arlene, there's, everyone has a time limit.
I would like to finish my statement.
Past years, we're asking you to summarize very quickly.
The question before you today is can a disaster again be avoided? So that is the case of demolishing a noted 1979 modern-style office building by Coen, Pedersen and Fox. Unlike another much more public demolition request, the owners here are not pleading hardship? What are they pleading? That the existing building is in the way of what they want to do? Is that they don't like the style of the building? Do they think the proposed new building is prettier than the existing one? That might be in Review Board and not the Landmarks Preservation Commission. The protection of buildings in a historic district should not depend on whether the owner likes the style of their building. Under the landmarks law, there's no legitimate reason to grant permission to demolish this protected building. If you do recognize these as legitimate reasons for demolishing a building in a historic district, then can...
You are at your limit. We need to move to the next speaker. So sorry.
No better than that.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for your testimony, Arlene.
Thank you, thank you. We have our next speaker, who is Stephanie Phipps. And as a reminder, you, you have three minutes to speak, two minutes, okay, sorry, two minutes to speak.
Can you hear me now? Sorry. Thank you, Commissioners, thank you for your time. My name is Stephanie Phipps. I live at 33 West 67th Street, and I bought this apartment almost 15 years ago specifically because of the block, the charm of the architecture, including the subject number 30, and the landmark's designation was of extreme importance to me. I'm baffled by the fact that, that a building designated landmark can suddenly be changed because a developer wants to develop it. I acknowledge that the proposed building has a very handsome design. It's exactly the type of building that should go in at the corner of 67th and Columbus. That would be a huge success instead of the Leviathan pencil currently proposed to house oligarchs. There's absolutely no reason to tear down this existing building and put this one in instead. The architect just now said that the block has an eclectic architectural style of various periods. The developer dangles affordable housing as a carrot for its approval. I have a long history as a banker lending to developers, and I can assure you that constructing a building of this kind will make it only affordable to the oligarchs down the street, not to a regular New Yorkers. I'm happy to go through the numbers with the developer to discuss the extremely efficient and speedy adaptive reuse for the current building. This is both environmentally friendly for the area, will not torture the neighbors as the current existing burden of construction is doing, and it's an efficient way for them to obtain healthy profits and at the same time provide needed housing for our community. I urge you to turn down this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in this room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, let me turn it over to Stephen Thompson for remote testimony. Elizabeth Lee.
Those joining via Zoom who wish to speak, please use the raise hand function. You'll be promoted to panelist, after which we ask you to unmute, state your name for the record, and you'll have two minutes to speak. The first speaker will be Andrew Cronson.
Good morning. My name is Andrew Cronson. I am a Columbia-educated urban planner and architectural historian. In light of last week's news, I offer my condolences to Stern's family and associates on his passing. This application was a real puzzle after hearing for hours in the prior meeting about the urgency for all housing. Here is a very nice building being downsized instead of repurposed for maximum impact. If we must capture every inch of housing space, no matter the consequences, AstroTurf has said very loudly, every potential end should matter. Random copy-and-piece vocabulary on this prototypical base is a metaphorical grog that comes off as dishonest. Looking at the street, there were nice cooperatives, but not very iced with flourishes, and that would not be at home on Park, more at Home and Park Avenue. What we have here is a really unique story of integration led by Coen, Pedersen, Fox as one of its first completed projects. The repurposing of barns and stables allowed him to associate with the neighborhood without being too foreign. At the same time, ABC made a quiet statement of its own as a mark on this chapter of the ongoing history of the neighborhood. The presentation cites Goldberg, who also noted that even Philip Johnson had not been as successful as they were post-modernism. As the infill ages, Paul changes his tone to remark this as distinguished and the type that communities should cry out for. A delicate curtain wall with shallow verticals recalls Leverhouse and distills it even further. The cascading wall of glass is its greatest strength. There's no doubt that boring modernism exists, but there's also modernism with true character. I would advocate for reuse to the fullest extent from the stylistic and sustainability perspective and hope that developer can also salvage any of the furniture material or demolition route is chosen. Thank you very much for your time today.
The next speaker will be Manor Fatima.
Hello, my name is Manor Fatima. I am the advocacy and outreach manager at HDC. HDC questions the appropriateness of the design proposal. This building is a handsome, modern building that is a part of ABC's legacy and the overall composition of the area. It is a testament to Coen, Pedersen, Fox's history of architecture in the city. The legacy of the building should be preserved in some form of another, should there be a new building. The idea of demolishing a perfectly sound modernist building to create a smaller building with less space for housing is perplexing. There is potential for the existing building to be converted to residential as opposed to full demolition. One can argue that the ground floor can be renovated to make the entrance more inviting to residents. Keeping in line with the applicant's desire to keep nine floors, there is also a possibility to eliminate a few floors in the existing building to make room for interior renovation, but also keep the character of the campus intact. Thank you.
The next speaker will be Dan Cohen.
Hi, hopefully you can hear me. I am the board president at 40 West 67th, and as you can imagine, we are pretty much well-impacted given our location of our building. We wholly support the design as it well complements the buildings around, and we feel that nostalgia, what we believe misplaced nostalgia for what is a mechanistic design, actually doesn't support keeping the neighborhood to its original character in, in, in design with maybe a better-looking environment and better housing for those that are coming into it. As you probably know, this, this is intended to be an affordable housing structure, and we wholly support that as well. And so if there's an opportunity to provide appropriate and nicer-looking housing that fits in with the rest of the neighborhood, then it's also going to give those residents a better chance of assimilating into the neighborhood. So we, we give full support to this as a building and as individual residents. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none on note for the record, that Manhattan Community Board 7 recommends a proposal for a taller building that uses more of the eligible floor area to construct additional units specifically for affordable housing, and the consideration of a design that provides for a full-width 30-foot-deep rear yard and uses living plants and permeable surfaces. Additionally, one individual recommends denial.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to respond to any of the comments?
Yeah, sure. I will start and then ask Dan to address some of the design comments. I want to go one second here. So I, I think that we addressed in our presentation the, both the appropriateness of demolition and that this, the existing building is not a building for which the Upper West Side Historic District was designated. It, it stands out in terms of height, in terms of material, in terms of its use of glass. I think that is evident in Goldberg's comments where he was talking about how the building, you know, did not fit in with the masonry character of the historic district. But I also wanted to address a number of people commented on adaptive reuse for this building. We've worked on dozens, if not hundreds, of conversions of office and commercial buildings to residential. And I think if you look at this building, you can understand why it would actually be a really horrible adaptive use project, particularly if you want to retain any of the character-defining features of the modern building itself. Particularly note that the elevator and stair cores are at the rear of the lot in the middle of what would need to be a 30-foot rear yard. So in order to convert this building, you would have to remove the entire core from the building, shift it forward, which would render the top four or five stories completely unusable for residential, render the middle section of the building largely unusable for residential, and leave similar footprint on the lower part of the building. And I think it's also worth noting that this building is 200 feet tall and 14 stories. So it was purpose-built as studios and offices for a television production company, and the floor-to-ceiling heights don't work for residential. And then if you look at the front of the building, you have no operable windows. You would have to make operable windows on the front of the building, all of which I think would take away from the character of the building. This building is not currently eligible for historic tax credits because of age, but if it was eligible for historic tax credits, I don't think that you could renovate this building in a way that would meet the secretary's standards or the appropriateness standards of this commission, so. And I think that's it. I'll just ask Dan to talk about the design of the new building.
Thank you, Ward. I would just reiterate that what struck, what has struck us about this block is the consistency on the block. Each building is unique. Each building has its own personality, and yet they're of a family. It's also a residential block, and they're residential buildings. And so the office building is certainly an outlier and an oddity on the block, and I don't think it is such a compliment to the residential buildings. Of course, my opinion isn't one that matters so much, but our goal really was to try to pick up the thread of what has been done on the rest of the block and try to tie into it to do a building that grows out of the classical tradition, that is eclectic in its expression, a combination of brick and masonry with punched windows. I think if you converted the existing building, the very large expanses of glass would need to be reconfigured with operable panels. As Ward mentioned, it would change the look of it so it would not be, and, and then once you added main entrances for a residential building at grade, it would, the building would be changed quite a bit, and it also would be odd with residential window treatments, the high visibility into the units from the sidewalk. We feel that our proposal grows out of the neighborhood and would make, and the block and would make a contribution.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? Okay, if not, let's go ahead and close the hearing. Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So move.
Commissioner Mayon, would you second that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start this discussion?
Sure, thank you. Firstly, take two seconds to say a couple of things about Bob Stern. Angie had asked me to put a couple of things, put a couple of words together, and so I, I thought that that was very nice, and I thought I'd give it a shot, so give me a minute. As it is with all impactful people, each person who encountered Bob, no doubt, came away with their own impressions. We here at the commission knew him as a remarkably effective, avid, sometimes acerbic advocate for preservation, both a defender and a critic of the commission. He was a conscience for the architecture of New York, a place that he chronicled decade by decade in great detail and deep insight. We also knew him here as a skilled practitioner, a designer, as we saw today, whose practice has enriched our city by modeling how to successfully use architecture to engage new buildings in a conversation with their historic surrounds that will remain a standard here. But when I personally think of Bob, I, I think of him primarily as my teacher, both as an undergraduate in my first design studio, and again, when I was in grad school, learning from him while I was teaching beside him as a TA in that same studio. Having lived with him on my mind for so many years, I, I, my sense is that the things that I took away from him might not be the things that he meant me to take away from him, but I guess... I guess that's the way it goes. Like a parent, like a teacher can only throw out their guidance and hope that somehow it'll be valued by those they're addressing. So I can only talk about what he gave to me. The first the first lesson that I think of when I think of Bob is he he taught us not to be afraid to copy, and maybe that's also something that we're seeing today. All architects copy knowingly or not, copy and got a bad rap in modernism's heyday. Derided is inauthentic or unheroic. Bob taught us that the best architects have always copied, synthesizing from their heroes. Copying forces you to look hard, to make your hand follow your eyes, internalizing the forms and shapes, the lines and ideas more deeply and more viscerally than only looking could do. He taught us that copying also never really works. No matter how hard you try, you fail to copy well. Our own skills, tastes and biases have a way of working their way in. Our first assignment as architecture students with him was to copy. We we picked from a list of revivalist classics from Hunt and McKim to Voisey and Luchens and drew one of their inevitably huge, definitely complicated buildings. Plans, sections, elevations, rapid graph on Mylar. I did Castle Drogo, officially the newest British castle. In having a start by copying, Bob was reviving a traditional Beaux-Arts style of teaching, a method only then being rediscovered. So since then, I have been and continue to be a very proud copier. Though copying through copying and through his often caustically frank critiques, Bob taught us how architectural styles worked. Bob trained us as Bob was trained as a modernist and loved modern buildings, but taught us to view modernism as one style among others, all understandable as systems with syntaxes and structures no different than language. Once you understood these rules by looking, learning and copying, you both demystify the design process by understanding and understanding how the architect got to the design, and paradoxically, you can also admire with greater depth the truly magical achievement when a designer transcends his precedence and synthesizes something fresh, creative and exciting. So when we look here at historic buildings and their proposed modifications every week, I draw on this sense of Bob's stylistic structuralism. When I decided to set up my own practice, I met with Bob to ask for advice. He told me to get involved, join things, volunteer, become useful. Just like Bob did when he started out with the Architectural League. So being a good pupil of his, I took his advice and eventually found myself volunteering to join the Bronx Borough President's Historic Buildings Commission in two thousand eight, which led me to this chair. So thank you, Bob, for for your lessons and for your passion for showing us how deeply architecture matters. Your legacy is not just the buildings you created on Champion, but the countless lives you shaped, including mine. So thanks. As to the topic of the day, it's a very interesting question that I don't recall us having dealt with recently, although this is, I guess, in a sense, this is the third of three large market rate, quite expensive buildings in quite tony locations that we're seeing requests to demolish. So I guess that speaks to something about the economic nature of New York City and its housing. But the question that's posed to us is, as the as the test testifiers have have put it to us, is is it appropriate to demolish a modern building that was created with contextual intent in 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 mind? And that was considered at the time, and perhaps could be considered today, to be a an appropriate intervention in a modern intervention in a district? I think that the the thinking about it, when I think about it, it's the same as if if, you know, this building were built in twenty twenty six, and then in twenty thirty, we came back and looked at taking this one down or taking some other building down that the that the LPC approves. And, you know, how the distinction of a non-contributing building per se is a fudgy one. I don't think we've ever really, it's not in the rules that we must, as it is in some places, some districts. Here, it's not in the rules. I don't think that we must therefore, because it's designated as as a non-contributing building, permit its demolition as of right, so so to speak. So I think the question about evaluating the building, which is a contextual building in a modern vocabulary, is that something that should be considered appropriate by the commission? I I've always felt that these buildings were, as described, subtle, careful, contextual in a modern vein or in a modern, post-modern vein. And they've they've worked. But and I also want to say that the the comments that the testifiers had about the consequences or logic or intelligence of tearing down a relatively new, good, good condition building, apart from the historic appropriateness of it, I agree. It's 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 bizarre to, you know, from an environmental perspective, to tear this down, and it it speaks to a city whose affordability is so out of whack that, you know, that it makes economic sense for a private developer to tear down this building and put up a smaller one. But that's not our purview. That's really not our place to comment on it. It's not our basis for making an evaluation of the judgment we're being asked to make today. So I don't view this building as I would, let's say, the Whitney or I mean, the Whitney before it was an individual landmark even. A building that was protected because it's in a district and it's unique, but it's not of the style of the surrounding district. I I don't think that that this building rises to that level. So then I I have to think about, you know, if it was intended as a background kind of discreet, subtle, but clearly modern building, is it appropriate from our perspective at the commission to tear it down? And I think that, you know, putting aside the environmental and economic and all those other things, I I can't make a strong argument why this would not be appropriate to tear down. I don't think it contributes to the district significantly enough to maintain it. And I don't think that in general, the commission's job is to knee jerk refuse to demolish buildings. I think it's you have to evaluate it one by one and make the judgment. And when the building contributes to the district, as the district is configured and as it is constituted at the time of the designation, I think that that's kind of the standard we've always used. And I I think by that standard, I can accept the demolition of this building. I'd be very interested to hear what others think. I think it's a very kind of foundational conversation that is appropriate to have in this case. So for the threshold question of can you tear it down, I would I would think that that's appropriate. In terms of the design of the building itself, I wrote my little notes before I saw the project. And its appropriateness to that, to many of those points is 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 funny. It is very much, you know, Ramsa, traffics and nostalgia. That's kind of their brand. I don't think that's something to be, you know, mad about or 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 anything else. And I think it's it's kind of, it's an unusual situation here where we have preservationists arguing for the retention of a modern building where its replacement would be a a more nostalgically historicist one. But that's what makes this job an interesting one. I think that it's appropriate to do a historicist building in this location, as we've seen in other locations recently. I think that the general analysis of the context performed by Ramsa is appropriate, is generally accurate. I think that the height of the building, materiality of the building are all seeking to, in their own historicist way, do the same thing that the larger modern building was trying to do, which is be quiet and fit in. And I think it generally succeeds. The problem with doing historicist buildings is that it's there's a very, very deep knowledge of of what a what a good historic building is and what makes for a less than good historic building. And I think that in the end, it comes down to details and the finer points. And I think that my my critiques of this focus on those. I I think that the overall building is too flat above the base. I think that the stepping should be deepened. Looking at the looking at the block, I I kind of took a virtual walk down the block as it was being presented. The the sense of depth in these relatively flat buildings is is, I think, considerably more pronounced than I'm seeing here. So I think that the applicant could could modify the depth of the elements. And I also think that it's it's noteworthy that that there has been, there's no real kind of horizontal, three dimensional banding or coursing above the above the base. And that's something that I did notice pretty consistently on on a lot of the buildings, whether they were the Tudor-ish or the more neoclassical or the more blended nineteen twenties buildings, they seem to have some kind of more horizontal emphasis that took a three dimensional quality. So I the applicant could work, could look at that with staff. Finally, I think that the the pergola element at the top strikes me as a off note. I think that the the finials and other crenelations and other cornice level or parapet level details that you can see on the block are are not as, I guess, facial and volumetric as as this, this kind of reminds me of something like a WPA structure or something. There's something about it that just doesn't seem to fit with the style of the building or the nature of the block. And I think that a lower, less three dimensional pergola might be more appropriate.
Great, thank you. Michael, thank you so much for those beautiful words on Bob Stern. I we really appreciate that. Commissioner Chen, would you like to go next?
Likewise, yeah. I think Michael put a lot of thought into this case and and I appreciate now we know better how your path to this commission came about. And you know, at the end of the day, I always say is is the L word, you know, what's the legacy? And when somebody's gone. And and I think to to Michael's point, we are in the city right now. There's no room at the inn. Obviously, this is not germane to the LPC right now, but and this commission is going to be facing a lot of similar issues, right, with the ninety million square feet of office space that are being asked to put into other users because the remote work and the the post-COVID pattern has really shifted. And so and that's why there, you know, supposed to be eleven of us to, you know, share our brains and see, see what's the best path forward. The issue of adaptive reuse, whether it be a church, whether it be an office building, is an interesting one, which is that as a society, how much of that code, that moment, we want to preserve? In words, you know, how, what percentage of the city should be and how do you let it evolve? And the benefit of, you know, Commissioner Chu and I is that we come from a civilization that have thousands of years, just unwritten history alone. And so or the European area or the African area where you have, you know, layers upon layers, you know, the fourth ring, the fifth ring, the one on top of the other. And as we went to school, we also know about, you know, the the Roman temple and the liberal temple and then the Gothic on top of one another. And so I think that in this issue here is that you have a television studio building. That's less than the legitimate requirement of thirty years to be considered individual landmark, right? So even if you want to take that to the next level, the question of the demolition, whether that is at appropriate level and 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 we as a society, what do we want to do with it? And I think that's that I agree with Michael in this regard, that I I do not necessarily feel that it is that that the the subject of putting it to adaptive reuse, especially when you need to make it work. The key word is fit and work, right? So if you want to talk about the element of the the new desire, how you blend it in, right? So obviously, you're trying to use a method of blending in, so to speak. And so this is the methodology that this applicant, the architectural firm chose to go with it, and I have no objection with that either. As to the so-called unusual portal on top, somehow that portal reminds me of what is outside of the Nanjing Marcel Liam of Dr. Sania sent, because the typical Asian model is that you have a central portal with two wings. So I don't necessarily find it as odd, obviously, in the context of a mid-block building in in the in in the Upper West Side, that is, so obviously, Michael has a good point about the the volume articulation of a horizontal band and the articulation, I think, that part of it, I agree also as well, that the applicant can work with the staff about how best to articulate this issue. So I'd love to hear what the rest of the commissioner have to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Mayon?
Thank you to the applicant for a careful presentation. Thank you to Commissioner Goldblum for sharing your thoughts. I really appreciated that. You know, I think it's absolutely true that historic districts and individual landmarks, you know, are not intended to be frozen in a moment. They are intended to be allowed to evolve. I think, you know, historic district and individual building, you know, without having life to them, you know, without being a kind of a good citizen, you know, are are almost meaningless. So that's that's incredibly important. And, you know, Commissioner Goldblum noted that we have recently found, you know, demolitions appropriate, myself included. But this is a case by case basis. And for me, I need more justification for the demolition of this particular building. I'm I'm not there yet. You know, I think I could be persuaded. But I found, I'll I'll talk about a few reasons why. The evolution quote, I think it was from the designation report, was interesting. You know, it speaks to allowing for future change in a historic district, but I thought it also could be interpreted differently. You know, this building was built, you know, apparently ten years plus or minus before the designation of the district, you know, and it is now aging right into sort of finding its place, one might say, in the historic district. You know, the 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 building was characterized as modern. There was some discussion about modernism being anything after nineteen thirty in this district, but then no sort of additional discussion about that. I have to be honest, I didn't understand what was trying to be argued there. It just seemed sort of, you know, well, it wasn't talked about, therefore it must not be important. But, you know, I think modern buildings can be important. It was also sort of dismissively spoke about as being a background building. I think background buildings are incredibly important in our city. They can be buildings with great, you know, integrity and dignity. And, you know, this is one that had care put into it. It is a contextual modernist building, as Commissioner Goldblum put well. So you know, there was also this this comment made, I think, Commissioner Goldblum, again, that, you know, he couldn't find any justification not to, which which, you know, okay, understood that argument. However, I'm not sure I can find a justification to. And I think that onus to find a justification for demolition is not on the commissioners, but on the applicant. And other than it's modernist, it was 10 years old and just look at it, which essentially was said in other words multiple times. I didn't really hear a justification for its lack of contribution to the historic district. So I'm not there yet. Could be in the future. So given that, you know, I'll provide just a couple of comments also on the proposed building while I have the if that's okay. I also, you know, have found sort of historicist buildings, you know, along with saying appropriate in the past, but again, taking applications on a case-by-case building, case-by-case. You know, this is a mid-block street wall building, and there was a lot of study done of other mid-block street wall buildings. But then I find this building actually to attempt to be doing something different than its neighbors. It appears to me to want to be a building in the round, on the corner or something else, because it has these flattened setbacks. And so, to me, is not accepting of its sort of street wall, mid-block condition and playing games with that. And I find that to be sort of the fundamental cause of some, perhaps awkwardness relative to the setbacks at the top, relative to the pergola at the top, which is a kind of flattened, you know, intent or flattened residue of a three-dimensional intent. So anyway, there was something about the sort of fundamental sort of approach to the building that I had trouble getting past, that I thought was, created the symptoms that others began to comment on. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Walder?
Good morning. Also, thank you, Commissioner Goldblum for just giving us your history with Bob Stern. I appreciate that, learning that history. I think I was going to ask you anyway. To the, I think, I appreciate Commissioner Mayan's comments. I think I'm probably more there in terms of demolition of the structure, thinking about the history and trying to understand the justification, looking at all of the variables, whether it was the design or how it's kind of created its own wrinkle in the history of this block. And although it is of a different style, I think there's some value in that, too. The same way someone would build a new building that would be contemporary in a historic district, but also different from the other buildings. I think there is some value to that in that in the design of this building. And they probably weren't necessarily, I'm not sure if they were thinking about that when this was built. Because I think it was, it was built before this district was designated. So trying to understand the justification, I can understand the, if it was an adaptive reuse, I think even in the buildings that we've looked at, there is some accepting of changing what that original building design was. So I'm not sure by saying that the building wouldn't look the same is enough justification to say it should be demolished for that purpose. So I'm not fully there in terms of the reason for demolishing it. In terms of the proposed, proposed design, not to belabor the point, but I do think overall, it, I think there's a lot going on. But even with all of the details and the thoughtfulness in the design, it still kind of falls flat. And I think there probably were some other decisions that could have been made to and I appreciate the diagram that showed the the small setbacks of the floors above. But I think there's probably a little more work that needs to happen to kind of get what they were, what the applicant is going for. Especially in relation to the neighboring buildings. Yeah, I think, I think there's just, it's just not given a level of detail on the plane as the other, the other buildings in this district. So I would want to see a little bit more there in this design.
Thank you. Commissioner Kenbe?
Yes. First of all, again, Michael, I'd like to thank you for your words and actually giving some light onto Robert Stern and also your attachment with him. I guess first of all, I'd like to say that I'm thankful that I'm here with
Commissioner, could you speak up?
Yeah. Absolutely. I'm thankful to be here with so many knowledgeable people and people who have varying varying degrees of expertise, because this is a challenging one. And there's multiple moving parts. And just even the whole ideal of preservation in itself. I guess also the thing is that this is a world we live in and the world itself constantly changes. And also, we have to think about how we move with the world and how we want it to be. And actually, what about the past that gives us good reflections on who we are and why we are and where we are today? And what improvements we may want to make as well? So there's a lot to think about and it's, it can be daunting at times, but we've been charged to move forward and this is our lane and we're going to move forward. What I'd like to say is that I do understand that the existing building is a non-contributive building within the district. And
Commissioner, I just want to make it clear, because Commissioner Goldblum said this earlier. It's not a non-contributing building. We haven't, that was not a determination. It's given a modern style. And the question is, to what extent does this building, given what it is, it was built just before the district was designated? Does it contribute? How does it contribute to the district, if at all?
That's interesting in itself. All right. That being the case, I don't believe that it doesn't mean that the building cannot be demolished. I do believe that even within a district, there may be opportunities in order for change and growth to happen. And that's something we'd have to really think about ourselves. As for the new building, I believe that it tries to be very accommodating to the site that it exists in. And for that, it doesn't really, I guess, ruffle any feathers. That being the case, I believe just as is, I believe it could use a little more finessing. Maybe looking into the details to actually give it a little more presence to itself, even though it's within a landscape. But overall, I believe I can move forward with this.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Chu?
Yeah. This is a really interesting case and I think it's interesting to hear my fellow commissioners' comments about this. As we look at the proposal, as Mark has just stated, it really is two things that I'm looking for is, number one, is it appropriate to demolish an existing KPF CBS building? And the number two is what is being proposed appropriate in terms of its design, massing, et cetera, materials? In terms of whether or not it's appropriate to demolish and how it contributes to the historic district, I feel that this building does have value to the district. Its difference from the other historic buildings around it that are older, I think, is the value that it brings. And I think that this, as well as other buildings that are more commercial and more contemporary within the mix of the district, is what brings a special character to the district, is that blend. It does have a massing in height that's unusual in terms of its neighboring residential buildings. These points that do sprinkle the district, I think, do give character to that district that is specific to the change in time. That being said, is this specific building for that purpose so contributing that we can't demolish it? I tend to fall on the side that Commissioner Goldblum was, is I do see the value of these more modern buildings within the district and their presence. In fact, I like, I don't think it's a negative and shouldn't be a case to demolish them. But this one in particular, I'm having a hard time finding a reason why it's not, it contributes so much that we couldn't demolish it. I do appreciate Commissioner Mayan's comment about the applicant needing to make more of a case of why it is appropriate to demolish it. And I do want to leave that statement out there, that I support that comment. And I do think that if this comes back, that that needs to be worked on a little more to convince me that that's definitely the case. That being said, I do think that, as I said, that this building specifically, I can't, I'm not seeing a huge reason why it does need to remain in terms of its contribution to the district. I would like more support there. In terms of what's being proposed, I think that because this building has been designed with the intent that it is contextual or a blend of contextual styles to make it feel less outstanding. First of all, I don't think that's necessarily the only approach here. I think this was an opportunity to do something contemporary because what is there is more contemporary and therefore might have said that that's something that retains that sense of contemporary architecture and the historic fabric. I could have seen that argument as another stylistic strategic decision. That being said, we have approved and do approve buildings that do seek to be more contextual in their design if they're new buildings. My complaint about this design or my, I guess my comments are a lot of cases were made precedences of the neighboring buildings and their individual characters. And I would add that this district does have a contributing character of style that does address the tops of the buildings. That they are individual, they're decorative, and they bring some sense of character to the buildings that give them some dialogue between each other. In this design, I tend to feel that so much has been done to try to make it contextual that it's lost a sense of, for me, a design intent. The top, as was described, seeks to be in the family of these stylistic crowns that are on many of these residential buildings. But I feel that it, it, there's something about it that doesn't feel strong enough. The shallow setbacks, I feel, are not enough to create a sense of depth if that's what is desired here. One could have said the design is not about changing volume, depth and setbacks. It's about a street wall facade that is flush. And that's acceptable, too, if the design can be made acceptable to us, if we feel that that design does follow that intent. I think there's a case for that for many of the neighboring buildings. In this case, it seems confused to me. I feel that the top is trying to be three-dimensional, but it's so flat that the bulkhead, which when I see an elevation, is more satisfying than an actual view on the sidewalk. Because I will never see the bulkhead, it's too tight of a street. And to that effect, the KPF building with its more significant setbacks, but very simple facades, to me, actually has a more impactful presence in terms of massing on the street. So I think that the application has a lot of research, has a lot of good intent in it, but I would like to see two things, more support on the demolition of the existing building. I think that to some extent, I would like to see in the proposed building also more proof of why existing structure could not have been retained. It's a separate point, but in this world of trying to incur less effect to these sites, I just want, I instinctively understand it's very challenging to convert a commercial to residential. But I do think it would help educate us and the public a little bit more about why this strategy was taken.
Thank you. And Commissioner Jefferson?
For the last couple of months, I've been thinking about demolition. And what criteria do you use for demolishing anything? Falls out to historic district or landmark building? And I'm looking at this modernist building and I'm saying, what criteria do we use? Criteria that we're using today is kind of flimsy to me. It's not
Commissioner, can you speak up a little bit or speak into the mic? Yeah, just speak up.
The criteria that we're using to destroy this building is flimsy. It's not strong enough. I'm looking for a criteria that four or five different reasons why a modernist building, historic district, should or should not be demoed. I don't think this one reaches that point right now. It could be a little bit more rigorous, you know. Looking at another project that has rigorous reasons why you would destroy that project. And I feel the same way about this one. I wouldn't mention the project because we all know what it is. And I, at a background building, I think it it can be assumed to fit in. It's called background because it doesn't, it's neutral. In this case, I feel ambiguous about what to do about the demolition. In terms of the facade, I think it's a very handsome facade. I think the reality is well thought through with the colors. All it, the crown. And this ends up with a crown on the top. Then it has some pieces that give shadow, but it's not enough. I mean, the crown is going to be the dominant piece of this plane. I agree with my fellow commissioner that it could have some more depth, but it doesn't have to. It could, it could, it could have enough weight to hold together all that top portion, some portion, to give it substance, which it doesn't right now has. But I think working with staff, it could, those areas can be separated.
Thank you. I just also want to note that Commissioner Ginsburg has been recused from this item. So I think what, today what we're going to do is take no action and have you come back. I think you heard some of the commissioners' comments. Some of the commissioners were not convinced that the building should be demolished and asked you to come back with a little bit more evidence. The other comments were, you know, on the crown or the top of the building, maybe a little bit more design, you know, rethinking some of the design. Other comments were about the depth of the building and then considering the building as a mid-block building rather than a corner building. And then I think another comment was about the horizontal band. Corey, anything else? Okay. So thank you very much.
Okay. Given that we're approaching our lunch break and have a lengthy afternoon item, we're going to forego we're going to forego the remaining items before lunch today and read those into the record, most likely presented next week instead. So I'll go ahead and do that now. Public hearing item number five, LPC 26-04313. This is an application for an amendment, number of Manhattan Block 1392, Lot 25. Again, we are reading that into the record today, not being presented. But we will ask to see if anyone in the room did come to testify on this item. We can hear that now, or you could wait until it's actually presented next week. Seeing no one in the room raising their hand, I'll ask Elizabeth if there's anyone on Zoom that wishes to testify.
Those joining Zoom, those joining via Zoom who wish to speak, please use the raise hand function.
All right, seeing that there's none, again noting, item five read into the record. Item six, LPC 26-03234, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in Borough of Manhattan, Block 1383, Lot 1, 875th Avenue in the Upper East Side Historic District Extension, not being presented today. We're reading it into the record, most likely be presented next week. But again, we will ask if anyone in the room is here to testify on item number six, 875th Avenue. Seeing no raised hands, I will ask Elizabeth to see if we have anyone on Zoom for that item.
Those joining via Zoom who wish to speak, please use the raise hand function. The first speaker?
Okay, and then, sorry, one, one more to go. Public hearing item number seven, reading this into the record today. It's LPC 26-01803, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 2563, Lot 37, 144 Greenpoint Avenue in the Greenpoint Historic District. Reading this into the record today to be presented on December 16th. However, I will ask if anyone in the room is here to testify on that item. Seeing no raised hands, I'll ask Elizabeth to see if we have anyone on Zoom.
Those joining via Zoom who wish to speak, please use the raise hand function. Mira Main, would you like to provide testimony? These items will be presented next week, and you can testify then as well.
All right.
Seeing none.
Okay, I think we have no testimony on that item. That concludes reading in those three items to be presented at a future date. And we will now, yeah, break for lunch.
Okay, so that concludes the morning session for today, December 9th, 2025. We're going to break for lunch. So right now, it's 12:48, but we are going to return at 1:30 and then resume the afternoon session. So we're going to ask anybody on Zoom to voluntarily exit at, at this time so that you don't have any technical difficulties returning to the afternoon session. Okay, so we'll return at 1:30.